All right, folks, good evening. It's August 5th, 2021. This is Council Rock School Board Directors Monthly Meeting. I'd ask you all please to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Last Thursday, man. Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you have the roll call, please?
Andy Block.
Here.
Mark Bylick.
Mr. Bylick is getting ready for vacation.
Edward Tate.
Present.
Michael Thorid.
Here.
Denise Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks is away on vacation.
Maryam McKee.
Here.
Joseph Hodago.
Present.
Kristen Marcel.
Here.
And Ed Solomon.
Here.
With that, good evening, Dr. Frazier, your superintendent's report, sir, please.
Good evening, Mr. Solomon. Good evening to the rest of the board. I think this might be a record crowd for the month of August. I like it.
More than the Phillies are putting in the seats.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. All right, and certainly, good evening to everyone watching at home as well. Welcome to the month of August, which means the countdown is beginning as we are starting to edge closer and closer to the start of the new school year. To that end, I do want all students and parents to please know that our Home Access Center, otherwise known as HAC, will open on Monday, August 16th. So another week and a half or so, we'll get that information out to you. And as we plan more and more for the start of the new school year, there is one item in particular that I want to note that is not on this evening's agenda, and that is the topic of masks or face coverings. While I'm not quite sure the backstory or what's been out there online through social media or otherwise, it seems like over the past couple of days that there've been a couple email campaigns on both sides of the issue, which, of course, is okay. Again, though, it is not on the agenda this evening. The board did have a vote, did take action on May 20th, and at that time, the board voted to open this upcoming school year with a mask optional approach. That May 20th vote had my support via a recommendation behind it, and I noted at that time that my recommendation was following squarely on the heels of that of the Bucks County Health Director, Dr. David Damsker. Now, many of you know that throughout this pandemic, I haven't always been completely on board with some of Dr. Damsker's recommendations, especially when those recommendations have differed from some of the other health organizations or agencies. The reality, though, my honest reality, as I look back with the clarity the 2020 hindsight provides, is that Dr. Damsker has been right a lot more than not. And not that he needed to, certainly, but Dr. Damsker has earned, in my eyes, a great deal of credibility and, as we continue to work to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students, a great deal of trust, which is critically important. And, look, doing what's best for students and adults hasn't -- it's always been the standard, but it hasn't certainly been easy, to put it mildly, to determine what's best, especially given that competing guidance that we've encountered along the way. This evening, I want to be as clear as I was as Council Rock School District Superintendent of Schools on May 20th in that I will not be recommending required masking for our CR students. I continue to trust Dr. Damsker's guidance. I also sense that this board as a whole stands behind its May 20th vote, and that is why the topic is not on this evening's agenda. So, again, I offer that because there's been a lot of email traffic over the past couple of days and a little bit before that as well. That action was taken several weeks ago, like I said, late May. That decision, that vote, stands. Our Council Rock schools are moving forward, and I want to tell you that we're moving forward in a positive direction. We're going to focus this year on some of the learning loss that occurred with too many of our students over this past year-plus, and we're going to focus our energies and attentions on the social-emotional needs of our students, which also deserve and require a great deal of attention. And we're also going to engage in some academic program reviews this year for the sake of strengthening those academic offerings to our students and how we do and can best deliver them. Now, don't get me wrong, we are not of the mindset that this pandemic is over, because we know it's not. And, yes, we will continue to be mindful of the fact that some of our students have not yet had that opportunity to be vaccinated. As adults, we'll bend over backwards to help keep our kids safe and healthy, because that's what we do here in Council Rock. But you can and you should expect to see our schools and our classrooms look and feel very much like they did in February 2020. As a district, we are re-centering individually and re-centering collectively, and we are refocusing on the fundamentals of how we best serve the awesome kids who are our CR students. From teaching and learning to extracurriculars. They are awesome, right? They are awesome. Love our CR kids. So from teaching and learning to extracurriculars to all the ancillary services that we offer, we're going to re-center, refocus on those fundamentals to make sure we do the absolute best work that we can with our awesome students. I will also share, from a health and safety standpoint, that Dr. Damsker recently shared with me and some others the results of two major studies, both of which showed that amongst hospitalized kids who had tested positive for COVID-19, that almost half of these kiddos were asymptomatic and only about 15% were deemed to be significantly symptomatic. And to quote Dr. Damsker, "The true risk of symptomatic hospitalization of children is minuscule," end quote. In my opinion, when you think about that coupled with the learning loss that we know occurred here and elsewhere, coupled with the social-emotional piece, all of that has to be weighed out, and that's what I've done. And I, throughout the course of the past year, I tried to call it the way I saw it tonight, and going back to May 20th, I tried to call it the way I see it, and am I at a different place tonight? Was I at a different place on May 20th? Yes. What I knew and some of my lived experiences contributed to those changes. And I'm good with that, and I hope that you're good with that. And lastly, on this topic, I want to be sure that everyone is clear in that we are not offering a virtual option this year. We were prepared to offer a full cyber academy at the elementary level, but the reality is that when we did that registration process, we only had about 1% of our elementary students who ended up being registered, and we just couldn't run the program in a fiscally responsible way. And, again, you couple that with the fact that we know it's best for kids to be in the classroom with their classmates and with their teachers, so that decision was made a couple months ago to not offer that elementary cyber program. What will happen is that our schools will open on Monday, August 30th. As I said, masks will be optional, and I want to emphasize that word "optional." When we open school, I expect to see some students wearing masks, and I expect to see some students not wearing masks, and it's all okay. It's great. You want to wear, wear; if you don't, don't. Both approaches perfectly legitimate, equally valued. I'm not wearing a mask right now, but we held our district leadership team meeting in this room the past couple of days, and, as I said to them, I have one on me, and if I'm around somebody who wants me to have a mask on, then I'll put my mask on. That's just the kind and respectful thing to do, and when I'm around students, as we start the school year, probably I'm going to have a mask on. And the reason being is I don't want any student to feel uncomfortable wearing a mask. If they know it's not required, if some of their friends aren't wearing one, maybe if they see me or others like me wearing one, then maybe it makes them feel a little bit more comfortable doing so. And to me, that's just a pretty basic part of being an inclusive community and a kind community. It's incredibly important for all students to feel welcome in our schools, to feel valued in our schools, and to just feel that genuine, genuine sense of belonging. And we all know there are many reasons why a student might not feel these ways. And from where I sit as the Council Rock community, and we all are the Council Rock school community, I am asking all of us, every single one of us, to please do our part to make sure that wearing a mask or not wearing a mask does not become a reason why any Council Rock School District student feels unwelcome, devalued, or like they don't belong while in school. If we do so, if we can come together and do so together, we will do something that I think would be pretty impressive, because there's lots around us locally, nationally, that's very divisive, the politics, the rhetoric, the animosity that has gripped and, in many ways, split apart so much of our nation. Again, as part of our CR community, we can ensure that our schools here in CR are inclusive and that they are just simply kind and friendly places to be for all kids, for all kids. And if we do that for no other reason than because it's in that environment that we know our kids will flourish, then let's let that be the reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier.
And, Mr. Solomon, before we move on, if I may.
Please, sir.
Agenda-wise, under Education Committee, item, let me find it here, item 4G, approval of 2021-22 Delaware Valley Consortium of Excellence and Equity membership. I know that we've gotten a number of questions and inquiries on that just today that, honestly, I haven't even had a chance to really go through closely as well as the past couple of days because of that and just due to transparency. While we've been part of DVCEE for a few years now, in the same manner in which we desire to be again this year, I think it might be in our best interest collectively here to table that for this evening, add that, Mrs. McKee, if it's okay, to the August Education Committee agenda, and then, you know, potentially bring it back to the board meeting. I believe our September meeting is on the 9th.
Yeah, and I concur with that. I haven't been able to get back to some folks that have texted me and sent me emails myself, so I appreciate you doing that, and I'm sure there's some folks in the audience that would applaud that as well. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Cox, Solicitor's Report, sir.
Mr. Solomon, good evening. I don't have anything to report tonight beyond what I circulated to the board earlier in the week, other than to announce the executive sessions on July 6th, the 19th, and the 29th, all of them on personnel. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. From there, we're going to go to letter F, public comment. Let me just give a quick editorial. School Board policy tonight is going to be enforced with the amount of you folks that want to talk to us, and we're going to hear you all, and we're going to have you go as long as you need to go to get your point across. The first set of 30 minutes will be agenda items only, and I know that took you a little bit down the different road, so I'll do my best to ensure that agenda items go first. If I miss your name because you wrote it or I can't understand it, like my handwriting, feel free to raise your hand and we'll get you right up to the podium. This is agenda items only. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on the CR TV when speaking. It's our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address this board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. So bear with me. I'm going to go down first. I'm going to ask...
Mr. Solomon, if I may.
Dr. Thorid.
If your name is called and you don't have an agenda item, just wave it off and he'll...
That'll be fine, yeah.
Please don't. We'll make sure we catch everybody.
Although Dr. Frazier is removing DVCEE from there, there's several folks that want to talk about it. First up will be Alex Enson from Churchville. Hope I didn't butcher your name, sir, and good evening.
Good evening, Directors of the School Board. Under Educational Committee heading for tonight's agenda, letter G states to approve $12,000 membership into Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence and Equity. All the school board members should put their pencils down right now and not approve anything further from UPenn's DVCEE until everyone in the district gets a look at the report we were promised from them. Why is it that the administration of the school district implement changes without the board's consent? We demand an end to UPenn's DVCEE involvement in our school district and end to diversity, equity, and inclusion plan set up by this administration. We are the taxpayers who pay this administration salaries, and we constantly showing up to the public comment about this topic. Why are our voices not being translated into action by this school board? Let me provide you with some inside baseball into what will be happening once the report comes out. It will state that the district should hire a diversity, equity, and inclusion departmental head who will oversee curriculum and instruct teachers on how to teach critical race theory in the classrooms. And to that point, teachers in our district were already told that critical race theory curriculum is coming and that they should start preparing to teach it. I urge you to look at the books that you approved to the school's curriculum at the April 26th meeting. They are filled with hateful rhetoric that has no place in this school district. The book that you approved, titled Between the World and Me, is a letter to the author's teenage son about feelings, symbolism, and realities associated with being black in the United States. And it goes on to say that, quote, "The main character is confident that white America will continue to plunder not only black bodies, but the environment too." How could you think that this is appropriate material that should be taught to our children? Please go back and take a look at the books you approved and see for yourself how inappropriate they are. Here's some more food for thought. We just spent millions of dollars on equipment to implement Zoom into all our classrooms so that children who are not in school can still be involved in the material that is being taught that day. That gives the kids who are not feeling well to go to school, opportunity to not miss any classwork, and better yet, to not be marked absent. And now, this is no longer an option for the 2021-2022 school year. Could it be that the administration doesn't want the parents to see what their kids are learning in class? Parents all across this country are showing up to school board meetings to fight against evil cultural Marxist ideology that is diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are putting our shoulders to the wheel, and we will not rest until the cynical narrative is removed from our kids' classrooms.
Next up, I have Jennifer Gassner from Holland.
Good evening.
Hello, how's everyone? I'm Jennifer Gassner from Holland. I have five kids in the district. I have three at South, one at Holland Middle, and one at Hillcrest. First, I just want to say thank you for the summer program, Dr. Elliott. It was really beneficial. My son is excited about starting the next school year. I see reduction with his anxiety, and he's excited, so thank you. So I would just wanted to move on to, there was an email that was posted on social media from the teachers' union president. And as a formal union special education teacher and as a high school counselor, I am unsettled with the letter, with part of the letter that was sent out to the teachers, and this is the part that's unsettling for me. Teaching is and has always been a political job. If you don't believe this to be true, someone did you a great disservice. I feel as though in my professional development, in my undergrad, graduate work, in addition to my professional development, everyone that I encountered gave me a great service in how to provide for all my students over the years. And I'm concerned with how this mentality is being entered into his classroom and how his, as a union, his role as a union president, he's leaving, he is impressionable, and that he is influencing the climate of how relationships are formed amongst teachers in addition to parents and teachers. So, I'm sorry, I usually don't come up here with notes, and I have a lot, so, let's see. I'm sorry, where are the ums? But, so, let's see. So, like, through my educational experience, I had learned that curriculum is to be displayed with the students' experiences and taking them into the classroom, and leaving my political biases, which I try to stay neutral, I'm not a political person, at home. And through my professional development, I've learned that to accept and tolerate students with disabilities from various cultures, and, you know, in this way, it gave students the opportunity to build character. And I just find that with my children, I'm just not seeing that character being built within Council Rock, and I don't know what it's missing. I mean, with my professional career, you know, we'd had peer mediators that were able to become problem solvers and leaders within the student body, and it also gave them the opportunity to learn tolerance and acceptance of their peers, you know? And I'm just going to use some examples, like with my own personal experience as myself growing up, in addition to my professional. So when I look at a student that may have ADHD, or an adult for that matter, how many times are we impulsive, right? We might move our hands, or we might say something out of line, but through tolerance and acceptance, I'm building character. For a student that is Asian, there, and we want to discipline them as students, right? They disrespect, they show disrespect if they look at an adult when we're trying to discipline them. And so, as a teacher, we have to accept that difference. As a descendant of a Holocaust survivor, you know, one of the biggest things is that being able to communicate and to express my thoughts and my feelings was very difficult growing up, and it's even difficult for me to speak now, but I'm over that. But anyway, but, you know, so to get that understanding of where our students are coming from, and I'm not really sure if all of this is happening, and one of the most impressionable professional developments that I had was when one of my colleagues gave a, it was a course that he gave us, on how to identify maybe a student or maybe have more empathy for a student that is not, that is of the LGBTQ plus community, how our words and how our actions can influence how they're feeling in the classroom. So I'm just, you know, so where am I? I'm sorry.
You've got about six minutes.
Okay. But, all right, really quick. So I'm bringing all this up because I'm not really sure what the DVCEE through University of Penn is really about. When I go through that rabbit hole and I read it, it seems like it early started on with the color of skin, and then they're focusing on, you know, hiring teachers. So we have a really diverse professional staff, and so I just wish there was more transparency. So if you can give us, like, more about how that's going to help our community, that would be fantastic. So I just want to leave with Dr. Martin Luther King. I look to the day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, by the content of their character, and I hope that Council Rock will be doing more with our character. So thank you very much for your time.
Next is Misty Law Flurry from Newtown Township, please.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for letting us have a podium today. I hate standing in the middle and shaking so much, but, so, yes, I am going to talk about, Dr. Frazier, you had just removed as an agenda item, 4G, but I would like to at least express my opinion since I'm here, my concerns. Since we as a community first heard about this organization out of the University of Pennsylvania called the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence and Equity, a lot of information has come up in our community, good, bad, ugly, all of it, and I know you probably have heard it even more than we as parents have. And they have been, we first heard about the DVCEE as it was discussed that they would conduct our equity review of our programs, training, hiring practices, all these different things, from April to June of this year, and I do believe we have not seen that equity report just yet. And so my concern was, since we really haven't seen a lot of documentation or data come from the DVCEE yet, that we would thoughtfully consider whether or not we actually need this membership with the $12,000 membership for teachers and staff for school year 2021 and 2022. So I understand this $12,000 expenditure, in addition to the $20,000 we have already spent for the equity review we are waiting on, is an expenditure the district has invested in in the past, and I think you did say that, Dr. Frazier. And I understand that this $12,000 has already been accounted for in the current budget, but I would like to better understand what line item in the budget this money is being allocated from, and if it's okay, I will email you about that, Dr. Elliott, tomorrow to ask that question if that's appropriate. However, my question is, do we have to spend every dollar in the budget, especially when our district has some financial concerns? And could any of that $12,000 that's already budgeted in our education budget be made up for in training options from the Bucks IU? Or could any training be outsourced and offered with money the IU has already been allotted to spend in our district? Since we know so little about what DVCEE has and would be offering, and we don't know how many of our staff have participated in past membership offerings, or what the materials were that they were trained on, or the materials are that they will be trained on, I'm requesting that the board table the motion, which has already been done. This is not about whether I disagree or agree with the Delaware Valley Consortium on Excellence and Equity. In fact, I personally have not seen anything from them updated except for what's on their face, on their website. However, I know that this board operates by making informed decisions, and I think the prudent decision tonight is, thankfully, what Dr. Frazier had said, to table the motion until we can all have more insight into what this would look like for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Looks like next is Wendy King from Newtown. Same topic, correct?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay, Wendy King from Newtown, PA, Triplets Inn, Goodno Elementary. I've been researching all this stuff, and it's all coming back, every, it's the same thing, different names. There's like 10 different names for this, but what I'm reading, I don't like. I don't want my kids to look at Peter because he's black, or Samuel because he's Indian, or whoever because they're any color and think there's a difference. I don't raise my kids like that. I have a 32-year-old, 35-year-old daughter who graduated Council Rock, didn't raise her like that either. And I just don't want them thinking that they're, that somebody else is different because they're not thinking that right now. And I hope to God they never think that, because we're not different. And I'm not sure why you want this in our school district. I'm just surprised, because I kind of felt like, Dr. Frazier, that you kind of called us racist twice in emails, and, but that's how we took it. And that's how I took it, that's how a lot of people took it, we were kind of offended, and I was like, where's this coming from? Like, does anybody remember the lady and the guy on Sycamore Street outside of Starbucks? Like, we all rallied around that. So I don't think we have a problem. I'm surprised that we can teach, I don't, can we just go back to basics and, like, teach the kids how to be kind to everybody? And that there's no difference, we all bleed, we all, you know, fall down, get a cut, you know, like, there's just no difference. I want to go back to years ago and teach that instead of putting in... I want to go back to years ago and teach that, instead of putting in my kids' minds that were, everybody's different, and you got to watch this person, and oh, you can't look at that person, and, you know, I have a son with autism, he comes home on the bus this year, and he says, Mom, I don't understand, I'm seeing all these Black Lives Matter signs. We don't discuss it. And I said, okay, and he said, well, I don't understand, Mom, what does that mean? He said, does, does that mean that my life doesn't matter? And I said, no, Matt. I said, it's just, it's just a group, some things happened over, you know, last summer, and, you know, they just wanted a sign out there to get it out that they think black people are important, just like we are, and he said, well, of course they are. He says, you know what, Mom? Animals' lives matter too. I'm like, you're right, Matthew, absolutely right. But, you know, like, so he's, he was confused, you know, like, and, and it would be like Colin or Brennan saying to me, Mom, can Peter come over? But, oh, Mom, he's black, can I play with a black kid, Mom? Huh? Is it okay? They're never going to do that. Mom, this guy's brown, can he play with me? You don't believe what my house looks like. So I, I have every kid from every nationality, they're friends with everybody. Our kids are not thinking that way, and I really don't want to put it in their head. I got one more thing, but I guess I have to wait for the end of the, it's not about masks, but it's about one of our questionnaires for sex ed, and it's got to go.
Just a second, send a public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that covers everyone that signed up for an agenda item, if I, oh. It looks like medical freedom. Oh, that's IU Medical Freedom. That's fine, is, that's not on the agenda, so we're going to wait till the end. That's an update. Sir, back row, raise your hand. We're going to, we're going to move that to the second half, folks. Second half of public discussion. We'll get through it as quick as we can. Yes, sir.
I also signed up for the second half, but that another item is not on the agenda. Will I get to speak voice in the second half?
Sure.
I mean, the thing I want to talk about is clearly on the agenda, it's item 4I.
That's really just an update from the IU? I mean, Mr. Cox, I, I think that it's.
I, I, I think it's a fine way to answer. It makes sense to me. My, my interpretation of the policy is that distinction is for items that are going to be voted on on the agenda are in the first session. Second session is for things that are not. That's how I interpret this.
Exactly. Okay.
I'm sorry, but the, the sign sheet doesn't say items are going to be voted on on the agenda, it just says items on.
Says agenda, agenda items.
Policy is a policy.
Say that again.
The, the policy speaks to agenda items, I think it's referring to items that are, that are going to, on which the board is going to take official action. Point being, before the board takes that official action, members of the public have an opportunity to speak about that issue. That's how I interpret the policy. I mean, this is within the board's discretion, but, uh, the way you've set it up, Mr. Solomon, I think works fine.
Dr. Thor.
We're talking about six minutes.
Six minutes, all right. Mrs. Brock, you're up first, let's go.
Let him talk.
You spent six minutes deliberating it, yes. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm just going to.
Make it easy on the guy with the microphone.
Sorry, I'm just setting a timer for myself, so I know.
I'm going to set a timer for you too. Ready?
Yes.
You went first or me?
Mine is already going, so.
I'm the boss, again.
All right. My name is Megan Brock, I'm from Churchville, I'm commenting about the IU. Uh, what, my comment in terms of relating to the agenda is about the influence the IU has on the Council Rock School District and every district in this county. This is something I was not aware of until, really, this February, when I started, uh, submitting and reading through thousands and thousands of pages of write-to-note requests. I've spent over the past four or five months, probably at least 400 hours, reading requests from over 100 agencies to get a clear idea of what happened in the 2020 to 2021 school year. As a result of that, we're hours of work, I put together this packet that I presented at the IU with, with fellow parents, which details how the, the IU used its influence, specifically Rebecca Malamas, who's the executive director of the IU, to undermine the credibility of Dr. Damsler and keep thousands of children in Bucks County out of schools, thousands. I'm sure at this point, all of you are aware of the 1955 Disease Law, Disease and Prevention Act, I don't know if I quoted, I quoted it correctly, but in that law, it says, "Local boards and departments of health shall be primarily responsible for the prevention and control of communicable and non-communicable disease, including disease control and public and private schools in accordance with the regulations of the board and subject to the supervision and guidance of the, of the department." Now, obviously, I don't have the time to go through this 50-page document with everyone tonight, however, I did make copies for all of you, so you can do that on your own accord. The reason this is important, and why I think it's very relative to what, what is going on tonight, and to what you shared tonight, Dr. Frazier, I was really thankful to hear about the sta, that, that you personally talk about how you are committed and have understood the importance of following Dr. Damsler's guidance. I know you haven't always been that way, because I've read your emails, so, I know you weren't always on board with that. Fair enough, right? I wanted to say that, that, um, in this presentation, I'm going to read the first one, a quote that I think is really important relative to what we're speaking about tonight, uh, from Winston Churchill. He said, "Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Every kid should have been in school last, last fall, every kid was going to be in school on June 15th, when Dr. Damsler released his guidance. I have multiple emails from all the superintendents, the IU sent it out, everyone was like, yeah, yeah, we're going to school, going to, hey, guess what? You know Allegheny County, Pittsburgh County, Westchester, Delco, they all wanted Dr. Di, Dr. Damsler's guidance, because Bucks County is one, I believe, of only 10 counties in Pennsylvania that has its own health depart, Department of Health. I believe only seven have a public health director. All right, now, per this law, legally, legally then, legally now, Dr. Damsler sets the rules, and he was going to set the rules. And then what happened? Rebecca Malamas and Jeff Soltanic, Jeff Soltanic did a webinar, you can see it, it's online, on June 24th, it was sponsored, Jeff Soltanic is a education lawyer, he's a high, I believe the union's PASBA, who sponsored the, the webinar, he also happens to be an elite-level donor of PASBA, 11 minutes, totally criticizing Dr. Damsler, not a, he's not a public health director, by the way, he's a lawyer, all right? And then you can read the story of how Rebecca Malamas took his rec, his criticisms and spread it, and by July 13th, there's an email of Dr. Damsler saying, "Why won't anyone listen to me? Kids need to be in school." And you know what you won't find in this freaking emails? No one talking about what's best for children. No one was talking about what is best for children. You know what? I'm not a politician, I'm a mother, I live in this community, I know there are children who are abused in this community, I know there are children who have commit, who have been suicidal because they've had their lives taken away from them. I am thankful for this board, I am thankful that you are on par with Dr. Damsler. Please keep it that way, it is the law.
Three and a half minutes? Let me, let me ponder. Mr. Siemens, you want to go with IU, sir?
Jonathan Siemens, I live in Newtown. Uh, thanks for letting me speak now. Um, and I'm sure everyone's aware here that I've been a pretty staunch critic of the board and, and our superintendent, and I want to just take a minute to just say thank you to Dr. Frazier for what he said tonight. I, I was, uh, pinching myself to see if I was dreaming, because he and I have not been on the same side on, on this for a long time, and, uh, and it was really nice to hear that, his report tonight, so thank you for that. So I, I just wanted to take another minute to talk about the, the intermediate unit, and specifically about the meeting last month when our board representative, Denise Brooks, went there.
Mr. Solomon? Yes, sir. Mr. Tate?
Okay, that's fine.
The rule is that speaker address can, is to address their comments to the chair, but a speaker can speak about a particular board member if, if he or she wants to, or the solicitor, or the superintendent. That's within that, that speaker's right. The rule is that the speaker has to direct his or her comments to the chair, so that, that's the distinction.
Okay.
Keep it to me, then. There was a question, Mr. Odogo, yeah, sure.
Why don't you state your, your view, Mr. Tate, so I don't misstate it?
Mr. Odogo, there's a policy 903 about public participation in board meetings, um, and it says, "All statements shall be directed at the presiding officer, no participant may address or question board members individually." Um, and it is the discretion of the, the presiding officer of the board, um, to interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, or abusive. So it's, it's a gray area, but it's, it's a matter of, you know, if, um, bringing up a board member's name, particularly when she's absent, is, is my only concern.
I, okay, understood, thank you. Okay. I mean, it makes sense to object and overrule. Fine.
So just, so everyone's clear, my, my view of it is that that, that rule is meant, that rule is meant to maintain an orderly meeting, so rather than having a question-and-answer session between a speaker and a member of the board, uh, or having comments become too heated, a public comment or's, comment should be directed to the chair, but that doesn't mean that he or she cannot speak about a specific board member's vote or position, the, the viewpoint of the solicitor, for that matter, the viewpoint of the superintendent, as long as it's relevant to school district business. So that's how I come down on that policy. I think folks have the right to criticize board members, the lawyer, anyone specifically, if that's their, if that's their, uh, view of things, so.
And, and just to be clear, all I said was her name. If, if Mr. Tate had given me, if he had given me a chance to finish, he would have, if I say something objectionable, fine, and, and, and next month, if you want me to come back and repeat this when she's here, I'm happy to do that, but.
We've, we've, we've been very consistent in, in letting this go, I just want to bring it, direct it to me. I'm not very tall, but I can take it.
Okay.
I take it every day.
That's fine.
I hit the wrong button, sir, I don't know if you're keeping track of your time.
I'm not.
So we will, we will guestimate on this.
All right, I'll go sit down.
I'm sure you won't take three minutes, please continue.
Yeah, so, um, we all know what the intermediate unit does, it provides essential help to the more than 96,000 students throughout Bucks County, and our more than 270 private and public schools. And currently, right now, as I said, Denise Brooks is the Council Rock School District representative to that group. At the meeting last month, uh, and this only came out because, uh, somebody was there recording it, and it was on social media, she voted in contradiction to this board. This board voted seven to one back in May to, uh, make masks optional, it's well-covered territory. When she goes to the intermediate unit, whoever, not just her, whoever would be representing us, she's not representing Denise Brooks and her constituents in her part of the Council Rock School District, she's representing this board. And for her to go there and vote in contradiction to what this board has passed, to me, is, it, it goes back to, and I, I'm sorry, Dr. Frazier, to pick on you again, but it goes back to last fall, when the board voted seven to two to return our elementary kids' school, to school, and then the next month, when the plan wasn't in place, Dr. Frazier said, well, I didn't think that was a real vote, and this board did nothing about that. So now, we have a representative of the board who thinks, well, there's not going to be any repercussion, repercussions, I'm just going to vote the way I think we should vote, the hell with the rest of the board, I think the IU should make masks mandatory. And to me, I, I just don't see how the board can continue to, to stand for that. And I would, I, I don't know the, all the ins and outs of the board policies, but I would ask at this point, if, if it's possible to have another board member who will respect the votes of this board, represent us and this district at the IU, I think you should make, make that move, because what's going on now and what happened at that meeting last month did not, she did not represent this board. Thank you.
Ma'am, since I'm enforcing the policy this evening for the first time, I'm going to bend the rule, and that's it after this evening. Agenda items will be discussed first, all others will be discussed afterwards. Not knowing that, and you arrived this evening, you're expecting to speak, so please, you have three minutes to voice whatever concerns it is, and then you better have a good excuse why you can't hang out the rest of the night.
I have two children at home that haven't eaten dinner.
I have three, and I haven't eaten either. Good evening, who are you, where are you from, Amsterdam?
Thank you for the opportunity, my name is Julie Musto, and I'm from Churchville. My husband and I come from out-of-state, blue-collar towns, but we love living in Bucks County. We work full-time jobs, and I have late, I, I was laid off for much of the pandemic. We volunteer in the community, at the schools, and with athletics. My son is a Council Rock sophomore. As parents, we have talked with him about so many of the issues facing our society, locally, in our nation, and globally. He is receptive to conversation, informs his own opinions based on his own personal experiences. We encourage kindness and believe in minding our own business as best we can. We aren't perfect parents, he's not a perfect kid. I am here today to discuss CRT lessons at Council Rock School District. I understand that CRT is very controversial and complex. My questions are, what is the purpose? What does it solve and teach? I would like to share an assignment that my son received in his reading and writing workshop. He was asked to complete a privilege check. The checklist consisted of 53 questions, and my son answered every one, yet he received a zero, or, excuse me, he didn't answer them, he answered as he saw fit, he resaw, received a zero. He was allowed to redo the assignment, so he changed all of his answers to yes, made up some answers that he didn't align with, and just to get that better grade. Once completed to his teacher's liking, he received full credit. I have no idea how this assignment helped him to become a better reader or writer. For another assignment, in the same class, my son was asked to write an essay about a politically-charged social, social agenda. It was an opinion-based essay, but his teacher didn't like the what, what he wrote, it wasn't her opinion. She sent my son an email saying she disagreed with his opinions, and sent him articles linked to the world wide web to sway his opinion. It is my understanding that teachers are supposed to teach. Her job wasn't to teach him her opinion, it was to teach him how to express his in writing. Plain and simple, she was not following the learning objectives of the class, she was virtue signaling. In the following weeks, I talked to Dr. Frazier and met some board members too. We discussed the two topic lessons, the CRT and CRT in general. I was told that they would do their best to fight the teaching of CRT, and to that point, Dr. Frazier even confirmed his stance in a later notification to Council Rock School District. Unfortunately, teachers are sneaking CRT-based lessons, or whatever they want to call it, if you want to call it equity and inclusion, or however they're calling it, they're sneaking it into the classrooms. Again, I ask why? How does this help our test scores? How does it help our children enter the real world where they will have to work and make financial decisions for their families? Does it teach our children to value one another regardless of their skin color? Does it teach pride in our country, the USA, where you can do and be anything with commitment, dedication, and hard work? The simple answer is no. CRT doesn't teach any of that, it creates division, and it threatens the dignity of the individuals it proclaims to protect. I urge you, Dr. Frazier, and members of the board, to... I urge you, Dr. Fraser and members of the board, to reject the teaching of CRT, DEI. I beg you to instead shift to creating inclusion of all, every color, white, brown, whatever color you are, mixed. Everyone, stop pointing out the differences. Unite and create an environment where every kid can have a sense of pride in themselves and pride in the Council Rock School District. Let them see not the differences, but rather see each other for the awesome individuals that they are. Thank you.
Again, my apologies. I think that's it. Good? Thank you.
Dr. Fraser?
Thanks, Mr. Solomon. Like Mr. Solomon, I'm not the tallest person in the room, but I, too, can take the criticism. The only ask that I have, and it is an important and significant ask, is that the criticism be factually accurate. Over time, there have been, not consistently, and not repeatedly, but there have been inaccuracies stated at that podium about some of my actions. So, I just want to point out a couple here this evening, because to be honest with you, when I hear the comments from a multiple, a multitude of speakers here, I actually don't think we're talking about different things. I think that there are some language being used, or not, you know, that we're just not on the same page in terms of what some of this means. I do not want, and Mrs. Musto, you're right, I put it out to the community in plain, clear language. I recall our conversation and appreciated and valued our conversation and still do. And as I said to the community in writing, as I mentioned to our district leadership team, when we met in this room the past two days, we will not be teaching critical race theory. We will, we, critical race theory has nothing, will have nothing to do with the Council Rock School District. So, it was mentioned earlier that teachers, I didn't write down the exact quote, but something to the effect that teachers have been informed that critical race theory is coming to the district, or something along those lines. I just want folks to know that that is not the case, and that is not going to be the case. And there was also a comment that actions have been taken that the board hasn't been aware of. I don't, certainly do not believe that that's the case with, frankly, anything of import, and certainly nothing around diversity, equity, inclusion, or critical race theory, or, like I said, anything else of import. That's really important to me. Operating with transparency, being genuine, is really important to me. And when I hear a couple folks talking about the importance of inclusiveness, that's the I in DEI. And like I said, I, to me, you got critical race theory, and then you have diversity, equity, and inclusion. They aren't even close to being the same things. They just aren't. And I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not a, you know, foremost expert on either, but I certainly know enough to know that they're different things. And one of them, yes, I very much value in our school district, and one I very much do not value and do not want to see in our school district. So, I just think it's important for me to say that, for folks to hear that, because if it's not said, then I'm afraid that folks would just hear that and assume that it's true, because no one, no one at the dais is speaking up to say anything different. And then, lastly, there was a statement made, that I had made a comment last December, that I didn't think it was a real vote in terms of the December opening. That's also not accurate, and I never said anything publicly or privately remotely along those lines. And again, happy to have that conversation with anybody who would like to actually spend a good time with the board on that topic. And so, again, my, the invitation is open to call me, email me, and happy to engage, really, in any of these topics, because, again, there are kids. And at the end of the day, I think that we have a lot more in common than not, a lot more similarities in terms of what we want and in terms of what we don't want. And I hope that, as I said in my superintendent report, I hope that we can get to that good place that is inclusive, that is kind, that is a place that allows our entire community, allows all of our kiddos, when they come to school, regardless of what school it is in this district, to feel valued, to feel like they belong, to feel special, and all those things. And that's, to me, that's what it's about. That's the whole point of it. I don't think critical race theory does that. I do think diversity, equity, and inclusion does that. So, to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Thorwart, I'm going to ask you to read letter G, please.
Just a moment to catch up with letter G. I got it. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of the Board of School Directors held on July 1st, 2021.
Second? I got it.
Need a second.
You say a second.
Okay.
I'll do it. Any objection? Any conversation? I ask the secretary to record that. Passing unanimous consent. I'll go back to you, Dr. Fraser, sir.
Well, if we could, because we have a couple, well, tonight, they're guests, not much longer, with us relative to the personnel actions. So, would we be able to move the personnel actions 6G and the addendum 6H up to now?
Please do.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah, let's go. Jump in there.
All right.
G and H, sir. Thank you.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachment to this agenda, and I further move to approve the personnel actions addendum as obtained in this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Tate with the second.
Go.
Got a second?
Nope. Got a second?
Oh, you're going to vote it first?
Oh, vote for it? Okay. All right, give me a roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Andy Block?
Yes.
Denise Brooks is absent. Joe Hidalgo?
Yes.
Mary McKee?
Yes.
Ed Tate?
Yes.
Mike Thorwart?
Yes.
Ed Solomon?
Yes.
Krista Marcel?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Mr. Solomon. Appreciate that adjustment, and my congratulations to two new administrators in the district. We have Mr. Donald Bach, who is our new IT infrastructure manager, and we have Ms. Vanessa Robson, who is our new assistant principal and athletic director, joining us at Council Rock High School North. So, Mr. Bach, I'm going to invite you up to the microphone. It's really not optional. Come on, you can. He's trying to ladies first.
All right, I know, I know, which I appreciate. All right, so, Mr. Bach is, as I said, joining us as in our information technology department as an infrastructure manager, coming to us from, is it Notre Dame High School or Notre Dame? Notre Dame High School, okay. As currently, since 2013, IT engineer and systems manager, and was a teacher in the, at the school before that, math and a technology teacher prior to that, undergrad at Lehigh University in computer engineering. Got all that right?
Yes, you did.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations. Welcome to Council Rock. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I look forward to serving the community and making sure that we have the best network possible to educate the children.
Indeed. All right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Man a few words, Dr. Fraser. Man a few words.
Yeah, that's it. All right, and also, just approved, as I said, is Vanessa Robson as new assistant principal and AD, athletic director at CR North. Vanessa is going to be succeeding Mr. Rob Finley, who many of you know, who will soon be returning to Truman High School, where he, from where he joined us just a few years ago. So, Vanessa is coming to us, come on up, from the school district of Haverford Township, where she is in the same position as assistant principal and athletic director at Haverford High School, and served in the same role several years prior, primarily with athletics and activities director, both at Avon Grove High School down in southern Chester County, and even further south at Staunton River High School prior to that. So, again, thrilled to welcome you, and congratulations, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Fraser, and the board, and district administration who's here. From the bottom of my heart, I'm so excited to be here and join the team and return home to Bucks County. I set off, set in on a path about 11 years ago to get as much experience as possible and return when the timing is right, and I couldn't be more excited to be here at Council Rock School District, ready to hit the floor running as soon as Haverford lets me go. Thank you so much.
Terrific. Thanks. And Mr. T, thanks for being here as well.
Thank you, Dr. Fraser. My compliments to the team for two, looks like, two great hires. Good job. Welcome aboard. You've got work to do. All right, we're going to go to Education Committee. Ms. McKee, please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. While the Education Committee has not met, Doctors Sanco and Elliott were kind enough to carve out some time to meet with me this past week. We worked on creating the topics and agenda items for upcoming meetings this year. Our next Education Committee meeting will be on August 26. Now, I'd like to move to approve consent agenda items B through E as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Second, Dr. Thorwart. Any board comment? Any objection? Hearing none, I ask the secretary to record the motions passing unanimous consent. Continue on, Mrs. McKee.
Thank you. Furthermore, I move to approve the attached Pennsylvania Department of Education Emergency Instructional Time Proposed Calendar and Schedule, Section 520.1, for the 2021-2022 school year, contingent of final solicitor review.
Second. And Mr. Bach, thank you.
And I believe Dr. Elliott would like to say a word about this item.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. McKee. Just very quickly, for updating the board as well as the community, this, this particular plan that we're submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for approval is really just a plan that we want to have in case we would need it. This particular plan was something that we also submitted last year. It is something that Pennsylvania Department of Ed has made available to districts to allow districts flexibility if they need to alter schedules in order to meet the required 180-day and the 900 or 990-hour statutory requirements that are required for education as per the Public School Code. So, we are submitting this with the intention of having it just in case we need it, but our intention, as Dr. Fraser had noted at the beginning in his superintendent's report, is our kids are back in school and we are operating as normal, but because the state is allowing this flexibility, only if you submit this for approval, we want to just have it there in case we need it. So, it's really precautionary and no other measure than that. Thank you, Ms. McKee.
Dr. Elliott, any further discussion from the board? Dr. Thorwart?
I'll start, and I'll be a contrarian and ask some questions. We used the same type of plan last year to keep kids in high school, sent home early, not having lunch in school. We use it for hybrid. We use it for a lot of things like that. I'm inclined to vote no, because I don't want us to do any of those things, and I want to kick one of the legs out from under this chair. In fact, I'm going to be voting no, just for that reason. I think kids need to be back in school in front of a teacher. I know that's your, that's your desire. I am no way insinuating anything else. I just want to take the option away. So, that's me. I'll be voting no, just because I, and probably this will not pass, or will pass, but we need to figure out how to do this in the classroom, and therefore, after watching and...
I had questions, like, we're not bound by these. These are just something we can submit so that the approval process would be, go quicker?
That's correct.
This looks like if people could see in the public, it's just showing all the different options that we basically experienced last year. Is there anything additional on here that we hadn't experienced last year as an option?
No. This is, this is really just, as you're saying, Mr. Hidalgo, for us to have it in the event that we would need to make a change, which hopefully, and we're not planning to, having the approval of the state of this plan, we could move more quickly if needed to. But again, that is not our intention.
Is there a deadline to when this has to be submitted, or can we take time to let everybody vet it a little more? Because to me, it seems like, I mean, the first option is traditional instruction, 100% in person, and then 100% virtual, and then these mixes of the hybrids, that's where it might be, you know? There's other options besides what we came up with, but, so, I've been asking for contingent plans of what happens, and this is basically what I was asking for. I'm not promoting anything but what we're going forward with now, but is there a deadline, or can we wait another till next meeting to submit this?
There isn't a deadline. The only deadline is once we submit it, it has to be approved by the board and sent to the department. So, we wouldn't be able to, if we would need to operationalize any of this, which I don't anticipate that we will, but operationalize any of this until it's approved by the Department of Education. So, we can absolutely wait if that is the will of the board to do so.
Dr. Elliott, quick question. Not sure of the answer, but it would fit with Mr. Hidalgo's line of thinking. When we submit to the state, do we also need to submit the minutes where, of the meeting where this is approved?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, we'd be looking at October or September approval minutes not being, so we would be submitting in October, then, at that point?
That's correct.
To assist there, I mean, if you needed us to approve minutes at a committee meeting, we can announce it and do it. Correct, Mr. Cox? I mean, we're voting minutes. I don't, I don't think, Mr. Hidalgo, and I won't speak for, I don't think the idea here is to hamstring you for two months. I think it's.
I agree.
For a little more digestion on that, so.
Yep. Easy enough. And just two other quick pieces. One, this is under public content, so, just so folks at home know, you do have access to this via Board Docs in tonight's agenda. And the only other piece, and it's not relevant, obviously, this time of year so much anyway, but this is what we used last year to have flexibility on inclement weather days. So, we still would have some flexibility, because we got approved a couple years ago for the flexible instructional days, those FIDS, as the state's calling them, but we're limited to five of those. So, if we have another bad winter, then, you know, we would, we face that limitation with the FIDS. We don't face that limitation with 520.1, and there are a couple other components that are just, you know, more operationally difficult with the FIDS than what we have with the 520.1. But again, that's not a September or October thing, just so the board is aware of that.
Mr. Tate?
I was wondering, just to add, Dr. Fraser, that this item on the agenda would enable us to get a sixth snow day with virtual learning, that sort of thing. So, we might use it in case there was a particularly bad winter, as you say, so.
Yeah, and so, one of the pieces, for instance, just that I can think, it's a big one, I guess, off the top of my head, is the flexible instructional days, and Dr. Elliott, I need you to correct me if I'm incorrect on this, is written and approved in a manner that any day would need to be synchronous instruction, that we could not do an asynchronous day. Am I correct on that?
I would have to double-check our application. I'm not sure that that's exactly correct, but there are some things with the flexible instructional day around how we're providing other services, supplemental services for students, that make the limitations of a flexible instructional day a little bit more difficult than the Section 520.1 flexibility that we have, that we would have.
Yeah, I recall nursing being one of those.
Yes.
That's written into the, that flexible instructional day criteria, if you will.
Dr. Elliott, just for clarification, if we don't approve this, what happens, again? So, the public's aware?
So, if the board decides not to approve this, and we do not submit a 520.1 section plan for approval to the state, then we are limited to only being able to use the five flexible instructional days this year that were approved two years ago for us to use throughout the year, and we're just limited to those five and no more than that.
Mr. Bach?
Yeah, I don't have a problem waiting in a very limited manner, consistent with Dr. Thorwart's suggestion, so, you know, I'm also happy to vote. Dr. Thorwart's suggestion, so, you know, I'm also happy to vote for it tonight. What does give me pause is waiting too long, because in my opinion, taking away any kind of flexibility we have would be short-sighted. Nobody's got a crystal ball on this board or in the public unless I'm missing something. That would be great if we did. I don't think anybody's got any intention of operating any differently than we said we would this year, but at the same time, the future is unknown from a bunch of different perspectives. So, you know, if, if we want to put the actual vote off for a short period, like I said, I'd be okay. In, in that case, I would suggest maybe you make a motion to table to see if that's there. You know, otherwise, I'm, I'm happy to vote for it. But, like I said, it is something that provides us flexibility, so ultimately, I think we need it.
So, Dr. Thorwart, just so I'm clear, y-you don't want this at all, or is it, you want more of it?
I personally feel like, and, and, and I've been reassured my feeling when, when I heard, "Yeah, but if we do a snow day, we have to do synchronous learning, not asynchronous." I don't think very highly of asynchronous learning at all. So, I, I, anything I can do to kill that, I, I will. And, and, and this, 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 this is, this is part of that. Mr. Hidalgo suggested letting the public and the board wait, wait a month, and, and, and if he wants to make a motion to table it, I'll second it. But, I, I don't know that I'm going to move on this one, so, whether you voted up tonight or not is entirely...
Yeah, Mr. Hidalgo, please.
Yeah, I mean, now's the time to talk about it. It's on the agenda. This is where we, we hash it all out, because my questions are, like, is this for a school-specific? Like, let's say we have to shut down a school at some point, would this pertain to that? Does that count as one of the five days in a school situation, in an emergency situation, where it doesn't have to be COVID, it could be something else that shuts a school down?
One individual school?
Yeah.
So, more involved, although not overly complex. So, front end going into that day, making that decision, and, you know, for the, for the next few days, yes, it counts as one of those five days. What we do in that situation, and we do it through Dr. Sanco's office, is we apply to PDE for a waiver for that school, those students, for that day. We've had to do that, we did it just this past year with a couple of schools. We did it four years ago or so with Sylvine Stone, I recall. So, not a lot, but here and there. A power, a couple of power audages last year, you might recall. And so, PDE has approved those. We don't have a ton of volume or experience with that, but the ones that we have had, those three or four, we have gotten approved. So then, once it's approved, then now we're kind of reset back to, to zero. So we still have all five left.
And that's why I'm glad we're talking about it, because I'm also thinking that if we, this is just so that the school days count, so otherwise, it shortens the school year. If we have to close schools and they don't count that as a day, then we're into June.
We're, we're extending it to...
Into, into, longer into the year. So, are we able to change this once we submit it and modify it? Because maybe just get something on the books at some point, and then if some new techno, if we come up with a new system, can we submit that to modify the plan?
So, we can submit. We did last year. We had submitted the plan earlier in the year, and then when we were making some changes to the schedule midway through the year, we resubmitted an updated schedule to PDE to let them know that we've made some changes. So, we can do that if we would need to.
Right.
We did try in, in the sample schedules that are part of the supporting documentation with this this evening, to put as many possibilities as we could think of to try to cover our bases just in case.
Good. Well, thank you, because I say, we're just trying to, again, be able to, if some curveballs come our way, we're able to move forward with the state and approve those, those days. So, the options are, if we wait, we could approve and really quickly prove, and then approve minutes and get it in, and probably the turnaround could be rather quickly if we needed to do something in an emergency basis, if we wait and just happen to get caught in the next month or so before we submit something.
From a COVID standpoint, you're talking?
Any, well, no, we're going to have to do over five days. We're covered for the first five days, and then we're like scrambling if we don't have something in there for, I don't expect this to happen either way, it's a doomsday scenario, so...
So I would say, from a COVID standpoint, we are not covered, because the flexible instructional days are for emergency school closures. I believe that's correct. So from a COVID standpoint, you, we would need the 520.1. From a weather standpoint, we don't need the 520.1, up to five days. And then the only other piece is, I don't know how long it took last year for PDE to approve this, what their turnaround time was. That would be the only other factor.
Yeah, I don't think it was, it wasn't very long.
I, I, I hope this is not going to happen, but worst-case scenario, we're into June with the school year, if we get caught before this is approved and, and approved, you know, I mean, submitted and approved. So, I'll leave it up to you guys. The first time I've seen it, there was no educational committee, so this is the first we're seeing it.
Mr. Solomon, if I may?
Yes, Mrs. McKee.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to speak in support of this motion. I know that we all feel very strongly, and we're convicted about getting our kids in school, physically in the classrooms, 100% for learning. I know that we're all committed to that. So with all due respect, Dr. Thorwart, I don't see this as in any way undermining this. I do think that this is, as Dr. Elliott said, this really is kind of a fallback measure, a just-in-case measure. I'm satisfied with the language as it stands now. I really appreciate the flexibility that it gives us. Mr. Hidalgo, as you stated, we've seen weather events over the summer. There was a tornado last week. We don't have to wait to see if we have a snowstorm. So, so looking at those possibilities, I feel very confident in submitting this to the state to give us greater flexibility, and I would be prepared to vote for it tonight.
Mr. Tate?
Real, real quickly, just a question, Dr. Frazier, Dr. Elliott. If we are approving this item, then any changes to the school's schedule that we would implement, exercising those options, would have to be approved by the board, would it not?
That's right.
Yeah. So, any, anything would come before the board, and we would have a chance to vote up or down?
Right.
Thank you.
We'll take it to a vote. Are you...
Marcella?
Mrs. Marcell, are you there?
Hi, I'm on the line. I have been listening to the discussion, and, you know, I think I probably feel similar to Mr. Block, that I'm happy to support this this evening. I'm also happy to wait if the board would like to discuss this more. So, I'm, I'm happy to go either way.
Well, I think we got four. If I go five, then that's probably passing. I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're going to revisit this and make sure that we tweak it, that there's the possibility that we can do that. But at least this is a good start.
Yeah, there certainly is. I mean, this, this can be revisited at any point.
What do you think?
You're risking my opinion?
All right.
Let's vote it.
Did anybody vote on it? Did somebody second it?
Yeah, it's already on the floor.
I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
No.
Mrs. McKee?
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcell?
Yes.
And Mr. Solomon?
No.
Mr. Block?
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Sorry you were, apologize for that.
Did I count 5.3?
Yes. Oh. 5.2.
5.2.
3.4.
5.2.
5.2.
5.2.
Gee, we tabled. Letter H, please, ma'am.
Thank you. I move to approve the attached DocuSign renewal for enrollment purposes as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second? I'll second it. That's okay. Is there any discussion on this? Is there any objection? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the secretary to record the motions passing unanimous consent. Letter I, Mrs. Brooks is on vacation, there's no update. Letter J, Mrs. McKee, I understand you have the mic again.
Thank you. MBIT Executive Council met on July 12th, at which time we approved salary increases for support staff. As I have updated, the board negotiations are ongoing with the Act 93 bargaining group at MBIT. There was discussion about the Health and Safety Plan. At this time, no changes have been made to MBIT's Health and Safety Plan, so that their plan is consistent with that of the sending districts. There is a new interim business administrator. His name is Bob Regal. His name may be familiar to some of you, as he spent a number of years here in Council Rock. We congratulate Jim Davy, an MBIT multimedia technology teacher. He has won the ACT Teacher of the Year Award, and it will be moving on to Nationals. Finally, the Executive Council will convene again next week, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move down to Mr. Tate and the Council Rock Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. The foundation hasn't met recently due to the summertime, but we continue to search for a new executive director. As I think everyone knows, Gail Acosta has done a marvelous job as executive director, but she's stepping down. She'll assist with the transition. It's an important position. It's on the homepage of creducationfoundation.org, and if you're not interested but know someone, please point them that way. We are really hoping to find somebody good for this position of executive director of the Council Rock Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move to the Policy Committee. Dr. Thorwart, please.
Sure. We met on July 19th. It was a fairly quick meeting. There were two policies that came out of that. One is on bullying, cyberbullying, and the other is Policy 6 on meetings, which is ironic because we started talking about policies tonight. That change is basically because of changes in state law. So, with that, I move to approve consent ag... Oh, one more thing before I, I move to approve. Mr. Cox sent me another policy, or sending me one, Policy 903, I believe, Mr. Fredrickson said, is coming your way. Does that sound right?
324.
324, I'm sorry.
324.
Yep, yep. So, we, we'll, we'll schedule another meeting in the coming months for that, and at the last policy meeting, I solicited input from the board on our policies for MBIT representation in Bucks IU, so they're still percolating, too, so we'll have a first read on those in the coming months as well. Sorry for taking so long.
No, thank you.
I move to approve consent agenda items B through C as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Tate, second. Any discussion? Do we have any objections? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the secretary to record that motion's passing with unanimous consent. Slide down to Finance Committee. Dr. Thorwart, would you mind covering that as well?
Sure. We, we did G and H, so it's just consent. I move to approve consent agendas, items B through F as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Mr. Block with a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any objections? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the secretary to record that motion's passing with unanimous consent. We move to the second phase of public comment, and I need to apologize to a, Mr. Hogan, if I was reading this, and I did read it after the fact, that you wanted to speak about 520.1, my sincere apologies for missing that. So, if you would like to still speak about it, I feel obliged to let you go first, sir.
So, thank you for letting me speak. I am a resident of West Rock Hill Township in the Pen Ridge School District, so I'm not a member of your immediate community, but I'm here to speak as president and board member of Bucks County Sports Association. That's the role that I want to talk about. So the reason I was going to tailor my comments to 520.1, and I found this conversation very interesting, that you guys are the only school board I'm aware of in Bucks County that's even talking about this issue at all, that, that is declaring that COVID rises to the level of emergency where you're going to need these days. And that's a, a big commitment to the school year to, like Mr. Thorwart mentioned, to even have that option. So what I want to do is give you my experience as president of BCSA, and just hopefully, yeah, gi-give you that background on what we did, which was in December of last year, when a mask mandate came, came down from Pennsylvania, saying that, you know, they amended the existing mandate to say that athletes need to wear masks while they're actively playing sports. Everybody went along with that, including Council Rock, everybody. Every youth sports organization in Bucks County went along with it. I'm actually not aware of any across the state that didn't. We decided we're going to go ahead and start our own organization. I'm not here to like talk about that. I'm actually not here at all to talk about the masks. One of the things that came out of that, that's been talked about widely about BCSA, is that we said, we're not only not going to require masks, but we're going to prohibit them. That's like a talking point that I'm always out there with. The thing that I want to bring up with you guys that I think is more relevant to 520.1, and specifically the parts of the Health and Safety Plan, which say, we're not going to quarantine, we're not going to contact trace, we're going to treat this like the flu, is we basically just made up a policy, just made it up out of thin air, that said, healthy children can come and play. Period. That's it. End of discussion. If you have somebody in your household that's sick, if you have somebody that shares a room with you and they're sick, if you are healthy, come and play with us. And at the time, I was kind of really worried about that. I didn't know if I was going to get in trouble. I didn't know if we were going to make COVID explode, but it just, it didn't feel right to make healthy kids sit at home while, you know, they miss their basketball championship game, or they miss two weeks of school, or whatever it is. At the time, I did not know what would happen with COVID, and now I know, and this is the part that I want to tell you. We had six athletes take us up on this offer. So that's six kids who came to a practice or a game while someone in their household was actively sick with COVID. Of those three eventually developed their own symptoms in the following days. Not one of any of the six transmitted at our practices or games, not a single one. And, and we keep an eye out for it. I'm an engineer, I'm a data guy, I have like spreadsheets for all this stuff. So I was looking for it. I was trying to learn like what happens. So, long story short, observing that and seeing, you know, you don't have to do everything that we've done to the kids, requiring all this stuff, and in particular, the thing that I'm most concerned about with this upcoming year, it's not really the masks, it's actually the quarantine. I, I think that that's the best part of the Health and Safety Plan that Dr. Damsker has helped you guys develop. I think it also has direct implications on 520.1, because when you don't quarantine healthy kids and you allow them to just move on with their lives and be kids, I question what's left to call an emergency. So just wanted to give you that background, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Jeannie Lindros from Holland. I want to bounce between the two sheets to try to make it as even as possible. Good, good evening. Nice to see you.
Hi, you too.
Please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jeannie Lindros, and I live in Holland, and I have two children enrolled in Council Rock. As a parent and an individual with an advanced degree in public health, I'm here to say that I find this four-page, oh, of course, I left it over there, the four-page Council Rock Health and Safety Plan to be opaque, anemic, and woefully inadequate, especially considering the more contagious and virulent COVID strains circulating today, combined with the fact that a significant portion of the students aren't eligible for the vaccine. To be fair, I reviewed your 51-page plan last year, and I found it to be incredibly comprehensive, thoughtful, and detailed, so I know our district is capable of much more. We know that schools can be a safe place to learn when multi-layered mitigation is used. However, for the upcoming year, layers of protection, universal masking and distancing are being removed or limited. Many of us are concerned about these changes, and this plan does nothing to inspire confidence in your, our community's ability to keep our children safe. As such, I'm publicly requesting that the school board and the district communicate more details about what has been done and what you plan to do to protect our children. I have many areas of concern with this plan, but in the interest of time, I will focus on a few. Given that the pandemic can change on a dime, positively or negatively, responsiveness and flexibility of these plans is cited as critically important by state and national organizations, and is even noted on the first page of your Council Rock plan. Yet, since the plan was approved on July 1st, there has been updated guidance from numerous national and state organizations. national and state organizations. Bucks County has moved into this substantial transmission phase, and the Delta strain now makes up 93% of all COVID cases. Any one of these individual factors should probably at least trigger a review, but to date, there's no documentation in any board minutes agendas, nor is it on tonight's agenda. With schools starting in less than 25 days, what are the benchmarks, metrics, or criteria that trigger a view, a review? What is the composition of the CRSD Health and Safety Plan Development Team that's tasked with monitoring and updating this plan on a regular basis per your words? When do they meet? How are the recommendations documented? And are they available to the public? And why is this not a standing agenda item as recommended in your own plan? I would also like to ask for further clarification on case identification, notification, isolation, and tracing plans. Based upon my review for the current text in this plan, there is no place, nothing in place, and there is nothing required. So as a parent, I will receive a letter from the school if there is a case of head lice in my child's class, but you are not required to tell me if there is a case of COVID. Furthermore, there is no isolation, quarantine, or return-to-school protocol outlined. There is no clarity on how this may differ for vaccinated students versus other students. There also appears to be no arrangement for students or staff to have access to free and timely rapid tests. Based upon the minimal text provided in this document, it appears to be a drastic departure from national and state recommendations, not to mention our own CRER protocols from last year. Further elaboration and details must be provided to parents and staff. Lastly, this Health and Safety Plan does not include anything regarding vaccination or testing protocols for staff and/or contractors that will be interfacing with our children. As Dr. Damsker has said himself, vaccines are the best tools to combat this virus. At a minimum, parents should have access to the vaccination rates of staff at the elementary, middle, and high school. I want nothing, nothing more than to have these kids in person, uninterrupted, and have access to extracurricular activities. I fear for this plan will not allow that. Thank you.
Jen McCurcher from Churchville, please. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you all for all your hard work. I know as a volunteer in, you know, our elementary school, you guys don't get enough credit, and thank you, I appreciate it. I am just here tonight to urge you to follow the recommendations of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics and require masks for elementary school students. I'm not here to fight a battle on masking across the board, even though, you know, as of right now, the CDC is recommending that even fully vaccinated people wear a mask in indoor settings where there's substantial or high transmission, which unfortunately we're now considered Bucks County to fall into that category. As of last week, the positivity rate was at 3%, and we know the testing's down because people that are vaccinated are not presenting as much, and, you know, they're not getting tested. I'm just extremely alarmed that by choosing to adopt the Health and Safety Plan that Central Bucks did, which was done in consultation with Dr. Damsker, it provides for no contract tracing, no quarantine requirements, no daily screening for symptoms. I fear that this sets us up for a free-for-all for parents of elementary school students to send them into school because there's no reason to not send them into school, and they're going to be maskless. So I don't think anybody here would disagree that it is vitally important for these kids to be in school, in person, and I'm concerned that there's no preparation right now for a virtual school option. I personally know families that with the elementary school students not being able to be vaccinated as of yet have opted to, and the guidance that we weren't going to require masks, they're sending their kids to cyber now because they don't feel comfortable. I feel like by not requiring masks in elementary schools, we're setting them up to fail. I have an eight-year-old son who's not able to be vaccinated yet, and the last week when masks were dropped, you know, I had the conversation with him that, you know you're not vaccinated yet, I know cases are down, but it's one more week, I would really like you to wear your mask. He went into school, and I think there was two kids in his class who were wearing masks, and I found this out over the weekend. I said, you know, did you wear it? No. There was only a couple of kids, Mom. I said, well, you know, we talked to you about how important we felt it was for you to wear it, since you're not vaccinated, did you think maybe that would have been a good thing to do to make those other kids feel comfortable? And he's like, you know, I just, it wasn't required, I didn't want to do it. These kids are young, and I think we all know that they're not really able to have that level of, you know, making great decisions all the time. That's why we have rules in place for them to guide them. So they're young, they're not the most cooperative. I'm concerned that the spread of the Delta variant is leading cases to rapidly rise. I don't want to see our schools close. I don't want to see us have to pivot to virtual, and by having no virtual option and no mask requirement, I feel that that's, we're putting the kids in a place to suddenly fail and be home, and that's not what is good for them. So I really just want to, you know, my goal here is to say, can we at least protect the elementary school kids until they have a chance to get vaccinated? So I'm for mask choice for the other ones who've had the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I don't, can't get the last name, but Stephanie from Ivyland? Can you just state your full name when you get to the mic, and good seeing you. Nice to see you.
Sure. Sorry, I wore hoop earrings and the mask got stuck in them.
I had the same for them.
Challenge, I know, I figured you did. My name's Stephanie Nemec. I am a mother of four, so I have one in Holland Middle and three at Maureen Welch. My position isn't nearly as articulate as Jeannie Lindros's, because as I mentioned, I have four kids, so I wrote my notes on the way over here, but I would like to second everything that she said and then kind of just add a little bit as well. May 20th was a completely different environment for COVID rates. As Jeannie said, things are changing on a dime, and we need to be flexible. We didn't have a rampant Delta variant. Rates of hospitalized children are on the rise. Rates of kids dying from COVID are on the rise. This is not May 20th. This is August, and we are heading back to school and into cold and flu season. You are responsible for our kids' health and safety. The American Academy of Pediatrics reported today, 72,000 kids have been diagnosed with COVID in the last one week. We require chickenpox vaccine to come to school. Delta is as contagious as chickenpox. We have one tried and true measure shown to reduce the spread of COVID and the Delta variant: masks. One of the arguments why the kids shouldn't have to wear masks is this: mental health challenges, behavioral health, depression, suicide, it's on the rise as a result of COVID-19. As a social worker, I couldn't, I couldn't back that statistic anymore. I couldn't be anymore moved by the fact that suicide rates are on the rise. And as a mom of kids who have depression and anxiety and go to therapy, I am so, so aware of the impact on our kids' mental health. But I don't really believe that our kids' mental health was negatively impacted by wearing a mask. It was negatively impacted by a quarantine, where they couldn't see their friends, and they couldn't play their sports, and they couldn't socialize. So we all know, we are all in agreement in this room that that is the top priority, right? So what will happen? What will make our kids have to quarantine again? What will make our kids not be able to see their friends? It's not wearing masks. When they're exposed at school and no one is masked, they will be back in quarantine, cut off from their friends, with no virtual option. And what about the mental health of the kids who will be wearing masks this year? They'll be ostracized, they'll be made fun of. Dr. Fraser, you mentioned you will wear a mask so that the kids will feel included. While I totally appreciate that sentiment, I'm not sure the kids care whether or not you're wearing a mask, they care whether their friends are. Singling out the kids who have parents who are highly educated on the science behind COVID and the Delta variant is not right. As Jen said, there were two kids in the classroom that last week of school who were wearing masks. My kids took theirs off too. The kids were all completely fine when masks were mandatory. It was a habit, they didn't notice it. We'd be halfway home from school, and they'd still have their masks on, and I'd say, oh, you guys can take your masks off now, but they didn't notice, and they didn't care because we normalized it. When it was required, wearing a mask was normalized. I don't really know why we took that away. So I'm willing to propose a compromise that I would love to hear the board discuss. Elementary school kids, since they do not have the option to be vaccinated, they should be required to wear masks. Now, middle school...
Let her speak, folks.
Now, this goes against the guidelines that everybody should wear masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. However, I'm willing to propose a compromise that the middle school kids and the high school kids, since they're eligible for the vaccine, that's not the fight that I'm going to fight. I have one kid who's vaccinated, so I'm not so worried about him dying if he gets COVID, but I'm worried about my three other ones dying if they get COVID.
Let me just jump in, ma'am, you're over three minutes. Can you tie it up, please?
Sure. So what will the school board do when one of our own kids gets the Delta variant in the classroom and winds up in CHOPS ICU on event? Where does the responsibility lie? And if masks are optional, is it fair to our teachers to have to police it? They have more than enough on their plates, but they will have to know which kids are supposed to be wearing masks and which kids aren't, and I don't think that's fair to them. You mentioned concerns about learning loss. When we wind up in quarantine again because our kids are not masked, there is more learning loss. So I'll wrap it up. You said you'd bend over backwards for the kids, but you won't just tell them that they have to wear masks, you won't just normalize it. We aren't either an inclusive community, nor a kind community, when we can't all do a very basic thing for one another: wear masks until everyone has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, wear masks until kids are no longer dying from COVID, wear masks until the Delta variant dies down, wear masks until the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC no longer recommends it. Thank you.
All right, next one up is Michael Wendell from Holland. State your name, where you're from, for the record.
Dr. Michael Hedrick from Holland. I have three children in Hillcrest Elementary School, one kindergarten coming in this year. Yeah, I think that we're having a lot of division here about this mask issue, and I'm here to talk about that. You know, so our elementary school children are susceptible to this virus. I'm on the front lines, I see this, I'm an immunologist. I've seen this, I've seen this virus, I've looked at the genetics of it, I know it's changed, we're dealing with a different virus than what we were in 2020. It just is different, folks. We can look at the rates of infection, it's out there, it's with the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics. For the bigger part of 2020, the rate of infection in children, school-aged children, they met up about 2% to 3%. What do we see today? In the last week alone, we're not in school now, mind you, in the last week alone, 19% of the new COVID cases were school-aged children. This is fact, this is test positive. So it's creeping up in our children, and, you know, the good news is we do have a vaccine, and yes, I'm a vaccine proponent, I love them, I work on them all the time. I think they're a great tool, and this vaccine will keep you from getting, it's not going to keep you from getting the virus, it will keep you from getting sick. But it's not there for our elementary school kids yet. It hasn't been proven safe for them, it hasn't been proven effective in them yet, and those studies are ongoing, and at some point, we may have this great vaccine for these children, we may not. My suggestion is to come back and, at least for our elementary school kids, the kids that can't get this protection, let's give them the masks back, let's use the tools that we have available to keep these, keep this virus down. You know, this is the Delta variant. It is different. I have seen it in my colleagues from around the world, I've seen it impact their families, I've worked very closely with teams in India. I've seen, it's anecdotal, of course, this is anecdotal what I'm giving you, it's not exact science, but I've seen very close friends and their families and their children in the ICU. I've seen people lost, healthy individuals, I've seen children scarred from this virus, from this Delta variant that is here, that is the primary COVID strain we have now, so... Just in closing, I think we do have to take into account, you know, that this will affect our elementary school kids. I think we have to put the safety measures in place that we know work. I mean, we know it works, folks. Look at the rates of flu we had this year, almost nonexistent. In closing, we have to consider to keep the kids safe. And, you know, making the, taking this, taking the masks away, I hear that it is going to be, you know, optional, but I would like to see this put in place for mandatory for our kids that just can't get vaccinated just yet, to keep everybody safe. And maybe I'm different because I've worn masks for 20 years to keep my test subjects from me infecting my test subjects. Nobody likes masks, they're not comfortable, I understand that, I get that. I don't like them, but they are a great tool, and I think we have to keep that on the table for our elementary school kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Vanessa Smith from Langhorne. Vanessa Smith? Just state your name again for the record, please, and good to see you.
Yep, I'm Vanessa Smith from Langhorne. Do you know that in 2018, 477 kids died from the flu, from the flu? We have done absolutely nothing for the flu, never wore masks, never quarantined, none of it. We lived our lives. Sadly, 337 children died from COVID, but that's still less than the flu. All I'm asking you is that you keep choice. I should be in charge of my health and my kids, and you should be in charge of your health and your families. No one should choose for you. We may not all agree with each other's choices to take care of our own health, but we still have that choice. It came to our attention that there was a survey going around for people who wanted masks to be mandatory, so we decided to make a very similar one for masks optional. So at 5:40 yesterday evening, we released our survey for masks to stay optional. We gave all community members a voice, and yes, school-aged community members too. We feel that their voice should be the loudest, as they are the ones whose rights were taken away. We received 663 signatures in a 24-hour time period. 21 of those signatures are not CR community, seven of those 21 are neighboring school districts who want our school to be a leader, and the rest, which was 14, have relatives in CR school district. We relied on social media to pass it along. One on the form is a written letter basically stating, we want masks to stay optional. Their names and their signature in agreement to masks optional, a few other questions like email, are they a part of the CR community, what school their child or grandchildren attend, how many children or grandchildren attend. I've printed out this for you to view, and we're just asking, please, all, please, we're all coming together as a community to ask you to stick with the choice. But I have here printed out for you what we had, and as I still think I have time. Sorry.
A few seconds to be exact.
A few seconds, all right, I'm trying.
Fifty.
Fifty, okay, so I'm good. As of right now, we are up to 689 signatures of people who want masks to stay optional. Just so you know, I blacked out their email because I didn't want their emails to be used for anything.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Howes. Am I saying that correctly? Good evening, sir. Just for the record, could you state your name and where you're from, please?
My name is Michael Howes, and I'm from Upper Mayfield.
Nice to see you, sir.
And I have three kids in the Council Rock schools, recently had one in each, so I guess I have a concern that goes beyond elementary schools. So I think there are enough people here, and I know several of them who are going to speak to you about the science and how things have changed, so I'm not going to bother with trying to do justice to something an immunologist can do better. But I think that we may not be paying as full attention to the fact that we have a very hard job here. It's hard to be in charge of people's health, and hard to be in charge of people's well-being. I know this personally, because I'm in charge of a team of people that has several hundred folks that are spread around the world, and I just saw the large contingent that I have in India absolutely get decimated by the Delta virus. And I actually lost two members, a 23-year-old man who was healthy, sorry, it's still a little hard for me to actually talk about this, and a 40-year-old... And a 40-year-old. He caught it from his kids. So the idea that we're talking about kids here as if they're the only people who are getting exposed is just asinine. We have a lot of things we agree with here. Everybody in this room wants our kids back in school, five days a week, in-person instruction. I'm with you. Asynchronous sucked. It was not a good way to learn. We've got people who are actually coming together and saying, hey, we now have scientific-based recommendations for when you should actually be masking and when you shouldn't be masking. The CDC is aligned. The American Association of Pediatrics is aligned. It would be interesting to see what Dr. Damsler thinks about these new recommendations. There are not really a lot of dissent here, except we seem to be hiding kind of fig leaf that on May 20th, where the situation was different, that Dr. Damsler said that it was okay. And so we agreed that we were going to pull that off. And there were 490 signatures that talks to you about that little fiasco of trying to pull the mask mandate four days before the end of school, guys. That was just not cool. But this should all end soon, right? We're not suggesting that we go back and lock down our kids and go back to school and do asynchronous learning. We're just saying while the Delta wave is coming, and it's already hitting people I work with in Georgia, it's hitting people I work with in Florida. It's here, guys. We need to protect ourselves, as the doctor said, with the me, with the mechanisms that we have. And it's not fair to say that this is my individual decision. I'm sorry. That is a false argument. You cannot have an individual decision and a contagious deadly disease simultaneously. You can't yell fire in a church. You can't drive your car recklessly, even though it's your car and you're right, because it endangers another person. And when you send your kid to school unvaccinated without a mask, the CDC says you are putting other people at risk, not just the students, but the staff, the people they're gonna go home to, people who may be immunocompromised and can't get vaccinated. And I'm with you. This, I hate wearing this. But if you can tell my daughter that her skirt has to be a certain length and that her shoulders have, straps have to be a certain width, you can inconvenience yourself with the mask. It's not a big deal, guys. And we don't have to do it much longer. Just get a little more vaccination, and we get past Delta wave. I really don't think this should be a controversial decision for you. Thank you for being.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Solomon. Dr. Frazier, please.
Thank you again, just uh, within the uh, you know, mindset here of providing clarification when needed. Um, yes, we did have Dr. Damsler's guidance back on May 20th. Um, but I think it's important that the community knows that as a school district, we um, and I personally check in with Dr. Damsler on a very regular basis. Um, typically, that's multiple times a week, and that has also been multiple times this week. So always uh, checking with him to see if guidance has changed once the CDC and the AAP came out with their guidelines. Uh, looked, you know, specifically for uh, changes, if any, uh, to his guidance. Um, and uh, again, my recommendations have continued to be consistent with what I have heard from him, and he has maintained consistency uh, from May 20th through now, so.
Yeah, and I'll echo that, you know. Anytime I call Dr. Damsler, he either calls me right back or we communicate within 24 hours, so. Um, this school board member is constantly in contact with him as well. Thank you. Katie Palmer. Good evening. Nice to see you. Can you just, for the record, state your name and where you're from?
Yes, my name is Katie Palmer. And my daughter, I will be attending Hillcrest Elementary this fall. And thank you all for coming today. And I'm so moved by all of the healthcare professionals that have given us some great science as to what is going on right now with the COVID-19 pandemic. We have two immunologists here, which I think is pretty, pretty awesome. Um, a pharmacist, nurse, and a public health official. So thank you for coming today. I'm here today in support of bringing back universal masking to our schools. Remember, the path back to normalcy is not linear, and Delta has changed the game. Last week, 72,000 pediatric COVID cases were reported in just one week, which is a five-time increase in cases since the end of June. Like my friend Steph said, this is not May. We can no longer ignore the recommendations from the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Doctors and scientists everywhere are telling us that unvaccinated children should be masked when indoors at school. Local pediatricians, including those at the CHOP Care Network of Newtown, a network that many of us rely on for our children's health, have also signed a petition among healthcare providers calling for masks in schools. I know many of our kids probably see Dr. Cardos, Dr. Ursula. They are all for masks in school. We should be listening to our local, local pediatricians. Recently, myself, along with Dr. Zuccarina Catina, have started a petition for parents in the district asking for indoor COVID-19 prevention measures with a focus on universal masking in our schools for the start of the school year. I have sent this petition to each one of you, each one of the board members, as well as Dr. Frazier, this afternoon. This petition is to ensure all voices in the district are being heard. The measures we are asking for, we hope, to only be temporary until vaccines are widely available to those under 12 and/or that the risk of transmission is once again at a low level. Again, we recently became into the level of substantial transmission. As of 2 PM today, we have gathered signatures of 434 members of the Council Rock community, representing 543 children, all who support universal masking in schools until vaccinations are widely available. In conclusion, I'm here tonight representing these hundreds of families who are asking you to please bring back universal masking in our schools, at least at the elementary level, until these children have a chance to be vaccinated. A mask optional policy is not enough. We know that the greatest protection occurs when all are masked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a Joanne McErnie. Good evening, ma'am. From Richborough. Just for the record, state your name and.
Sure, my name is Joanne McErnie. I live in Richborough. Um, and I'm just here to say thank you. I'm really here to say thank you to the board. Uh, but I, I probably have to say it to you.
Say it to me.
You can tell them, right?
Learned quick, thank you.
It's been, this year's been a doozy. It's, it's been really, really rough on everybody.
I don't use the word doozy.
Oh, mm, okay. You can translate.
Kids are watching.
You can translate for me.
Yeah.
Um, it's been rough. It's been rough on everyone, and I know you guys have put in so many hours. I've watched it at home. I've come here. It's, so really, really thank you for all of the time, all of the consideration, and considering so many different viewpoints. Um, I'm also thanking you for making the mask optional policy and thanking you for continuing the mask optional policy. I do firmly believe that parents have the rights to choose what is right for their children. I also do not think that masks are innocuous. Masks are a barrier, and they impact our children in all different ways. It is up to us parents to decide if we are willing to take the risk of COVID, which is pretty low for children, or if we want to take the risk of obscuring so much of their face. I thank you very much for giving us that option. Um, my kids are pretty typical. They don't have any kind of special circumstances, but they were very negatively impacted by masks this year. Um, the social and emotional component was drastic. So drastic that my child, who was in eighth grade, told me that she actually didn't make a single new friend until June 4th, when she was able to remove her mask. It's really significant, and I thank you for balancing all the different uh, factors here so that we can keep our kids as healthy as possible, both physically and socially and emotionally. I have two other kids in elementary school, and it was extremely difficult for them as well, both from the social and emotional aspect and also from a learning loss. It's critical that young children be able to see their teachers when they're learning how to read. My daughter was in first grade when COVID hit. She had to learn how to read at home, and not really with me, because I was too busy. It was with the computer. And when she got back to school, her teacher's face was covered. It's really important for these kids to be able to see and to be able to fully understand all of the sounds and combination of sounds that our alphabet makes to set them up for future success in literacy. She also wears glasses. She has a condition called a lazy eye, and she is at risk of losing the vision in that eye if it is not corrected. She cannot wear her glasses with a mask. It doesn't work. I have tried everything. When the mask goes on, the glasses go off. It is extremely difficult for her. She can't see when she's in the classroom, and she is at risk. My children aren't extreme examples, but they do demonstrate some of the unintended consequences of masking that I fear are not always being taken into consideration, but having heard some earlier comments today, I think are. Shall I wrap it up?
Please.
Okay. If COVID were a disease that severely impacted children, it might be worth it, but it's not. If we knew that masks worked 100%, it might be worth it. We don't. Parents have the option, if they want, to send their children to school in masks, and they did. And I really hope that you guys were able to see the kids when they got to go to school without masks on June 4th. It was incredible. And some of them still wore them, and it was okay. And you can buy an N95 mask for your child, and you can send them in. But I do feel like forcing universal masking is something that is against children, and I thank you for being for children, and I thank you for all of your time.
Next up is Bill Lynch. Bill Lynch.
Hey, Luigi.
No, Bill Lynch.
Hi. Everybody gets it wrong.
Bill Lynch. You're now going last. What was your name again?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Lynch. I'm from Holland, Pennsylvania.
Good evening, sir.
I am here to ask that you please make masks mandatory for all elementary school students, at least until this population becomes eligible for a vaccine. Please provide appropriate physical distancing to all elementary students while eating, rather than asking parents to make a special request and have their child segregated to a different room. The Council Rock Health and Safety Plan states that it will be continually monitored to include updated guidance from the CDC, PA DOH, and PDE. And that's excellent, but to date, you have not done so. Because my asks, universal masking and physical distancing among all elementary students align with the updated guidance from all three of those entities. In fact, my asks fall within the guidance of all additional groups, including the AAP, the AMA, and the US DOE. I'm also going to be leaving a petition with you this evening that is signed by 170 medical providers who either practice or live in Bucks County, who agree with these recommendations. Rather than synthesizing guidance from multiple sources, your health and safety plan defers to a single source, the Bucks County Health Department, which has consistently taken a cavalier and contrarian stance. I hypothetically ask any Council Rock teachers who are, who may be listening if they would pass a student who submitted a research paper with only one source. The plan in its current form has the potential to jeopardize the health and safety of all students K through 12, teachers and building staff, regardless of vaccination status. But I am focusing my ask on our district's youngest students. Students in K through 6 represent half of the district's student body, and due to their age, they must begin this year unvaccinated. Since the Delta variant has positioned COVID as a pandemic of the unvaccinated, I am begging this board and administration not to strip away the effective mitigation efforts that worked last year for in-person instruction and continue to be recommended by a plurality of oversight agencies. In May, when the board voted to make masks optional, Bucks County was experiencing a downward trend in COVID cases. Unfortunately, that trend has reversed. We currently have substantial spread. In addition to the presence of the highly infectious Delta variant, even Dr. Damsler was quoted on levittown.com as positing part of the reason cases could be rising is that restrictions are gone. This has been and continues to be a very real global pandemic. Effective mitigation strategies are not an affront to personal freedoms, no matter how many times that's repeated. With freedom comes responsibility. During a pandemic, we all share the burden of keeping each other safe. None of us want this. None of us enjoy this. And the longer we indulge the belief that some of us can simply opt out, the longer it will take all of us to truly put this behind us. The board has communicated consistently that you remain ready to pivot, and the time to pivot is now, before our children start school and before things get worse. Vote to make masks universal and physical distancing during meals mandatory in elementary schools. Provide effective layers of mitigation for the youngest students in this district who are ineligible to get a vaccine. It's possible that this would not be the popular choice, but that is irrelevant because it will be the right choice. You will show our community and our children what courageous, informed, and compassionate leadership looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Natasha from Newtown. You're going last. You were bad. Good evening. Just state your name and where you're from, please.
Natasha from Newtown. Stating the obvious. Um, I'm gonna go off of my script a little bit because I wanna say thank you for acknowledging the importance of following local guidance. What happens in New York, Florida, other countries is irrelevant. What the CDC guidance provides is much less relevant than what the local community is experiencing, okay? I also wanna address what, uh, Dr. Frazier, you said about being factual, because half the people here are not being factual. The Delta variant, if you call the pharmacies around here, they're not testing for it. So I'm not sure where we're getting the Delta variant from, okay? I called them. CHOP, I go to CHOP. If you call CHOP, they refer to, uh, actually throughout all of last year, they referred to COVID as a mild disease in children. Mild. Again, I don't know what these folks are, are talking about. The AAP that, um, some folks are mentioning here is sponsored by Pfizer. Interestingly enough, when that started to circle it around, uh, that went off of their website. But we have screenshots, so that's okay. It's all captured. Um, so if we're trying to follow the recommendations of all of these professionals, we need to follow the recommendations of factual and honest professionals, not CNN. So masks do need to be optional because they were required all last year, and they were beyond what I can say. It's actually interesting to watch the people come up here with masks, take them off, put them on, on public property and not sanitize. So I don't know if maybe I'm catching COVID from people over here. If they adults can't wear them right, I don't know what the kids are doing.
Okay.
But, but being vaccinated, you can spread it just like everybody else.
All right.
That's, that's pretty factual.
All right.
Okay, so I will finish this. So they do need to stay optional. We, we've already put up with the mandates of last year, and we supported those who felt uncomfortable. The same people who are asking for the masks to be permanent, or whatever they wanna call it, are the people who didn't want the schools to open either. And now they're sending their kids to schools. They're eliminating the six feet that they fought for, and yet they want us to still say, fought for, and yet they want us to still say, well, if you feel uncomfortable, you have to make, you have to force your kids. I don't have to force my kids to do anything, you know? Okay? And neither do they. It's, that's just not right. So I'm gonna leave it here because I was much calmer when Dr. Frazier spoke, and then I listened to the lies, and the lies and lies. And by the way, for those of you who are referring to data, this is Bucks County Department of Health, if you'd like to. I've been looking at these numbers. There was zero deaths over a seven-day period as of August 1st. I think there might have been one or two. There's three people in ventilators in a community of 650,000. Three people in ventilators, okay? 10 people are hospitalized. 650,000. I'm sorry, that is not substantial. I don't care what the CDC says.
Next up is Justin Holzen. From Newtown. Quitter. Jennifer, huh? From Newtown? How do you say that? You're gonna say it again when you get to the mic, too. Blame the husband, right?
Jennifer Oliver, my husband's Lebanese, my maiden name is easier.
Okay. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening. And for the record, I am also a healthcare professional. We are here tonight to thank you and to encourage you to stay the course with the currently proposed health and safety plan that follows the guidelines of Dr. Dampster, our Bucks County Health Director. Thank you, Dr. Frazier, for your opening comments and support for this reasonable decision. Understandably, the community is anxious with the rise of COVID case counts. Cases. These numbers, of course, will continue to fluctuate as circumstances and seasons change, but let's keep some perspective. According to the Bucks County COVID tracker, we had eight deaths contributed to COVID in the month of July. Eight deaths in a population of over 650,000 people. Everyone of eligible vaccination age has been able to get the vaccine if they choose to do so. COVID endemic is not a temporary situation. It is not going to be over anytime soon. The Delta variant is only one out of 160 variants, according to the WHO. More will continue to evolve. That is how viruses survive. We must adapt and provide our children with as much normalcy as possible. Wearing a cloth or a paper covering over your face is not normal. It is dehumanizing, damaging, and they do not work. There are no randomized scientific trials that support the use of a paper or cloth face mask to prevent the spread of microscopic viral particles. For this, we have presented many, many articles to you over the last few months. Luckily, though, there is an option for these parents who want to know that their own children are protected from the SARS-CoV-2 virus. They're called N95 masks. They are available, and they are proven to work scientifically to prevent viral spread. In order to wear them properly, you must wear them with the two very tight straps around your face. It's basically like breathing through fiberglass, but they do work. And you may not use them repeatedly. You can only use them one time. They are disposable and thrown away after age use. So just for your knowledge, the budget that you'll need for this to supply one child with one mask for every day of the school year will range between $360 to $1,800, $80 per child, depending on the market rates. And that is your best option. That is a great option. You can send your child an N95 mask. I've made copies for you of data that was collected by K through 12 schools for mitigation and in-person student density on the COVID-19 school response dashboard. Hundreds of thousands of data points have been collected from 49 states, showing the reality of student masking with transmission outcomes, also with distance and density mitigations. The data shows that none of these efforts have worked to slow an impact on reducing the transmission of this SARS-CoV-2 virus. I printed the graphics as large as I could for you. I'm sorry, the print's tiny. I tried to write the numbers down for you so you could read it. And I also put the source for the website on the bottom. But the reality is, doesn't matter how much we talk and want to make ourselves feel more comfortable, these measures do not work. So just because some people may feel a false sense of comfort by the visual of a covering nose, of a covering over the mouth and nose of the general public does not mean that it's actually effective. I'm a mom and son. These are likely the same parents who feel comforted by the thought of vaccinating their children with an experimental injection. The reality is, not everyone is going to be vaccinated, so we cannot wait for that. I would like to encourage those parents who would like their children masked to send their own children in with an N95 mask and leave the decisions appropriately to parents over their own children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm not gonna even attempt the full name. Griselda from Holland. Can you state your full name and where you're from for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Griselda Zuccarino Catania, and I have lived in Holland since 2014. My family and I moved here soon after I finished my PhD in immunology at Yale because of the excellent schools. I'm here today to advocate for the safety of my daughter, who's entering second grade at Rolling Hills Elementary. I'm also representing other like-minded families in the district. Like Katie said, in just four days, we collected signatures in support from over 430 families in our community, representing 540 children. We're just moms, we don't know what we're doing, but, you know, we spread the word and got some signatures. Not everyone can be here or feels comfortable being here. We ask for your leadership in spite of political pressure, as this is not a political issue, but a matter of public health and safety. Cases are going up, the Delta variant has changed the game, and recent guidance from the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and Pennsylvania's Department of Health are all recommending masks as part of mitigation in schools based on case levels. I am here to ask you to consider implementing mitigation measures recommended by the CDC in at least a temporary measure until vaccines are available to children under 12 and/or based on the level of community transmission. The epidemiology of where we are today has changed from the end of the last school year. The CDC COVID tracker lists Bucks County as an area of substantial community transmission. That's only one level below high, which is their highest ranking. The Delta variant is much more transmissible than previous variants. Infections in Bucks County have increased roughly tenfold in the past month alone. Delta is as contagious as chicken pox. Without mitigation, on average, one person will infect eight to nine other people with Delta. This is much higher than previous variants, which infected about two other people. The science on COVID in kids is clear. Children can be infected with SARS-CoV-2, can get sick with and die of COVID-19, have lasting COVID symptoms. A Lancet study showed that about 4.4% of children had symptoms 28 days later. That's one in 23 kids. So if, you know, everyone is not wearing masks, that's like, you know, one kid in every classroom have, like, having long COVID and can spread the virus to others. COVID is responsible for more pediatric complications and in-hospital deaths than seasonal influenza. We shouldn't ask our young kids and their parents to choose between going to school and staying healthy and safe. Young kids will be eligible soon, right? Within the next few months, we should give them the opportunity to be vaccinated before asking them to enter our schools and classrooms unprotected. Experts support masking. The facts are clear. Masks are not harmful to children. Masks do significantly reduce disease transmission. I wear a mask mainly to protect those around me. When our personal decisions affect others, we cross the line where the public good outweighs personal choice. Having an option to wear a mask in an indoor setting where most people are not wearing them is not enough. Evidence from the CDC shows that the relatively low levels of infections in kids seen during the last school year were in part the result of widespread mitigation efforts in schools, including mask mandates. Masking for the unvaccinated is in line with the US guidance, and I am asking you to listen to the experts, follow the science, revisit the health and safety plan, and reconsider the decision to make masks optional at least six to eight weeks after our kids under age 12 have a vaccine or plan to add or reduce mitigation efforts at delineated local case rates so action can be taken swiftly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Lindros, you're on here twice. Are you speaking again, or did you just sign twice? JD Lindros. So I'm gonna cross you off of this. Thank you. I just wanted to double-check with you. You're good. Mr. Jonathan Siemens. Good evening again.
He's back. I'm Jonathan Siemens. I live in Newtown. I have two kids, one going into North and another going into Newtown Middle. When I hear about the mask mandate, I think of the gentleman that was here, I think it was at the June meeting, who told us all about the story of his special needs daughter, who, because of the mask mandate, couldn't wear her hearing aids. And, like, he talked to us through tears about how difficult that was to see her go through, the pain that she had to go through. And, and to say that this is a simple equation of, well, everybody wear a mask, or nobody wear a mask, or there's a choice, it's never that simple. And there's people like that that are caught in the middle, and what does somebody like that do if there's no choice? And, you know, for everybody that comes up here, we can find doctors or organizations that will support our point of view. You know, the CDC's been all over the map. I'm not sure why anybody would believe what they say now. But same with the American Academy of Pediatrics. I think we all can agree, maybe, maybe we can all agree, that Johns Hopkins University is maybe a leading medical organization in the world, and a doctor there, Marty McCary, he thinks that masks are a waste of time, and his group there did studies on COVID deaths, and I would urge everybody to look it up for children, and found that there were exactly zero COVID deaths of children in the United States that did not have another condition such as leukemia. Nobody without an underlying condition that was under the age of 18 died from COVID in the United States in 2020. So I would, I would, again, don't take my word for it. Go to the Johns Hopkins website and look for it there. And in the end, masks is as great as the proponents of masks say they are. You still have that choice. You can wear a mask. You can let your kids wear a mask. I'm not co-parenting with the school board and the administration of this district for my kids. I should have the choice on whether or not my kids can wear a mask, and my kids should have that choice. And, and just finally, quite honestly, I, you know, I said something about the, what I think about the CDC and the AAP, and those are just guidelines. They're not constitutional rights. They're not the natural laws of mankind that we are all born with. And to say that, oh, it's just a mask. No, it's not. And to a lot of people, it's not that simple. And I do appreciate the fact that this board is giving us the choice, and I hope that you stand strong in that regard. Thanks.
Christine Esposito, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Frazier, for your comments. We had emailed, actually, a week ago, I think, when I wrote to the board and to you expressing my opinion about keeping the masks optional. I'm a concerned mother of a fourth grader in a kindergarten at Maureen Welch Elementary, and I'm here to ask you to maintain the health and safety plan that was voted on earlier this summer, which gives parents the option to decide to mask their children or not. I just said I had emailed with you and how you said that you have grown to trust Dr. Dampster, and I really appreciate that, as he has been right most of the time. I'm asking you and the board to continue following the local guidance as these officials are on the ground near us and have the pulse of the community and health of our neighbors. The issue comes down to an understanding of positive and negative rights. A negative right imposes on another a negative duty to not do something to another person. If I have this right as a community member, all is asked of you is to refrain from blocking me. It's called liberty. Positive rights impose a positive duty, a duty to act in a specific way or provide a good or service. If I have this right, you respect it by complying or giving me whatever it is. This is called entitlement. Other neighbors are not entitled to have me or any other parent mask our children against our will. However, you have the liberty to choose to mask yourself and your family, and I support that no one should interfere with you doing that. In the end of the day, this is a personal and medical decision that should be made by the family or in consultation with the family doctor. And this is not a one variable issue, and families need to weigh all the factors to make this decision. And I just want you to, want to thank you all for respecting the liberty of our neighbors and allowing families to make the decision that is right for them. Thank you.
Is there a Wendy here from Newtown? Do you need to speak again, ma'am? Or was that the first? Oh, you're speaking again.
Wendy from Newtown. Okay, I, I think that whatever our Department of Health Director says, if he says to us in a month from now, look, guys, we really need to mask again, I don't think any of us are gonna have a problem with that because he's telling us. But I don't want anybody else to tell me. My son with autism needs facial expression. He didn't have it. His year was horrible. I don't want to go through that again because I can't go through that again. But that's not the other thing. So the other thing is, is you guys, did you know that this, like, sex ed paperwork that was going around or during the year, like, the things that it said? Like, things I can't even repeat to you was on this from Council Rock for eighth, ninth, and 10th grade?
I'm not sure. What is it you're referencing?
Well, I'd have to bleep a lot if I told you. I can't say because I don't know if there's kids watching.
You know, yeah, let's, let's err on the side of caution.
Yeah.
Please. If you want to contact me directly, that would, uh...
Yeah, we can't have this.
Okay.
It's, this is actually something a child predator would say to somebody online.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Let's leave it on RTV, please.
Yeah. We can't do it. So as far as masking, I'm not for it. I mean, look, if, if, if we had to do it again because our, you know, our director, Health Department Director said we did, like, you know, I trust him, but I'm not doing it for somebody else. You know, I mean, I'll go with him. I don't know where these 19,000 kids dying from it that was brought up, because the only thing I saw was today on the news that there was, like, 30,000 at the border with, with COVID. But I also, my brother's also an ER doctor in Arizona, and I asked him, I said, how do you get this test? How do you know if you have the Delta? He said, there's no test for that. I said, well, then how can they call it that? If there's no test, how do you call it that? He's like, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's going on. So if you don't have a test, you can't give it a name. I don't think, I mean, logically, but I'll send you that and show you.
Please, thank you. Next up, I have a Scott Handfinger. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Scott Handfinger, I'm from Holland, PA, and I'm here tonight to express support for changing the health and safety plan to have mandatory masking in elementary school level. I'm not asking for hybrid or virtual learning or anything like that. All I'm asking for is a mitigation plan for the students who are unvaccinated, ineligible to receive a vaccine. And until the time that students can get the vaccine and have a fully kick in, masks should be required in the elementary school level. We've seen tonight, this is a pretty touchy subject for a lot of people. And you're gonna, you know, you're gonna hear stats about no kids died from COVID, and they don't get sick from COVID. And then you'll read an article about a children's hospital that is overflowing with COVID, pediatric COVID patients. So you're right, like, we're gonna see all sorts of statistics on both sides of the, on both sides of the argument here. We could really do this all night, but at the end of the day, it comes down to a decision that this board has to make about how they're gonna proceed with the upcoming year for students. And the board is making a decision to essentially host an experiment on the students in the elementary school level. You could either go safety first and have mitigation, or you could have no mitigation, which is essentially what we have right now. And we're gonna find out in a couple of weeks who's right and who's wrong about this. So hopefully, nobody gets sick. I don't want that to happen to anybody. I want all these kids to be in school. But we're gonna find out in a couple of weeks what's going on here, and hopefully, I'm wrong. But we're gonna see. So anything that, you know, I just feel like this is a preventable situation, and we're gonna find out, so. All right? That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up is Michael Edrick from Holland.
I already talked.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Loretta. Did you just sign in, sir? I do not see you on here, but happy to hear from you. Come on up. Just state your name and where you're from, please.
Michael Mandell from Holland. Okay. I had a prepared statement, but most of the people who agree with me kind of went over everything, so I'll just...
We have three minutes, so do what you gotta do.
Thanks. My name is Dr. Michael Mandell, and I'm a pharmacist at a local community hospital. I'm here to plead with the board to implement all the CDC guidelines on indoor activities at our schools. These include mandatory masking on buses and inside the schools, distancing ventilation sanitary measures, and contact tracing, not for the entire year and not for the entire school district, just for schools that educate children under the age of 12. school district, just for schools that educate children under the age of 12. I have three children, twin boys aged 10 and a daughter aged 18, and we have to wait for the FDA to allow emergency authorization to vaccinate for their ages. So when I decided that I would speak at the board meeting, I was excited, but then it quickly escalated to anger and fear. The anger is because I cannot believe that I'm actually here trying to plead my case to the board and the community at large to make our school safer for our children. Fear because based on my experience, not just what I've been reading in the journals and social networks, or hearing in the news, or in the supermarkets or restaurants, or watching our government and our neighbors debate, my fear is based on actual, real-life working with and talking to my colleagues at the hospital, talking to patients or their families in the trenches at Ground Zero is what the worst results and outcomes this virus has caused and continues to cause. How many on the board or in this room can say that? While I'd love to stand up here and talk about data points and statistics and why vaccines are important, this is not why I am here. I'm not trying to convince you of that, nor do I want to convince you of that. I'm trying to come up with a bipartisan solution. Because I may disagree with you, but I'm not going to doubt you're here to do what's right in the best interest of your children. And you're just as passionate about doing right for them as I am about, as I am for doing right for my own. I don't want our schools to shut down. I don't want our society to go back to lockdowns. And I'm pretty certain that's something on both sides that we can all agree on. I'm not asking you to change your beliefs. I'm asking us all to come together. I'm not here to trample on freedoms. I'm here to show you with my, with my heart and tell you that I'm afraid. I'm afraid and I fear for the, for the lives of our children, mine, my neighbors, the communities. I fear their health and their lives as this pandemic gets worse. I see it. I work in a facility that deals with it. I know all of us fear for our kids' well-being. I'm pretty sure that we can all agree about that. We all fear for our kids' well-being. But just give us an opportunity to add another layer of protection. Those who believe in the science before going back to pre-COVID business as usual, I want it to, but I'm just asking for just some time so that we can get our kids vaccinated. Or those who believe that vaccines are the way to, to put COVID behind us. That's all I'm asking. And then, and then we can go to mask optional. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Loretta Sturck. Joseph Giacanda. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Giacanda. I'm an attorney. I live in Newtown, and I have two children currently attending Good No Elementary, one of whom has special needs. Last year, both my children were compelled by school policy to wear masks when attending school in person. And right before the last week of school, the board wisely made masks optional, and boy, were my kids thrilled. You'd think that you had summers start early. They were absolutely thrilled. It was the greatest gift they could have gotten. Well, I understand the mask optional policy is not currently on the agenda today. I'm here to let the board know what is obvious, which is that there's significant community support for keeping the mask optional policy. There's a lot of talk about data on both sides. I actually think the data is largely not in dispute. The CDC itself says on its website, quote, "Children are less likely to develop severe illness or die from COVID-19." That's today. That includes this so-called Delta variant. The CDC is right. The United Kingdom study in July of 2021 found that deaths and serious illness following COVID-19 infection in children is extremely rare. Children themselves are simply not at risk for dying or serious illness from COVID, even without vaccinations. In fact, many of these kids, one thing hasn't been talked about, many of these kids already may have antibodies that haven't been tested because they may have already developed some degree of herd immunity, as they are often asymptomatic and have often been exposed to COVID over the last year and a half. We have no idea. So it's very possible a large segment of the, of the student population is already essentially vaccinated by being exposed to it. Further widespread availability of COVID-19 vaccines has already altered the landscape of who is currently at risk. As of today, 55% of Bucks County adults are vaccinated, and that number goes up every day. That does not include those who already have natural antibodies, who may already have had COVID. And since 2019, there were 62,000 cases in Bucks. So if we assume some percentage of those are not included in the vaccination count, two out of three people, adults in Bucks, are now largely immune thanks to the virus. There's widespread availability for the vaccine in Bucks County for those who want them among adults. In other words, right now, I could walk down to CVS or Rite Aid and get a free vaccine. So therefore, among adults, anyone who is currently vulnerable is choosing to be vulnerable. Every single teacher, staffer who works or visits a Council Rock school can be protected by a vaccine which is highly effective. Even with the COVID variant, according to official statistics, Bucks County has a vulnerability level of low. In fact, I just looked today, as some folks did, there are two, two patients currently in a 650,000-person county who are in the hospital and ICU with COVID. Two, okay? The hospitals say on their websites that this data means there is, quote, "enough capacity to absorb even a new wave of COVID infections." So if the children are not at great risk, and the vaccinated are not at great risk, and the hospitals are prepared to deal with any possible contingencies, why are we forcing children to do something that doesn't work? And in fact, President Biden's top advisor, Dr. Osterholm, said on CNN this week, quote, "We know today that many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." So unless you're going to wear respirators in school, which was not required during the 2020 school year, the reality is the masks don't work anyway. Others have said more eloquently than I that requiring masks for eight hours a day harms children emotionally. I want to note a physical impact that has not been discussed. The Journal of the American Medical Association dated June 30th of this year conducted a massive clinical trial of 25,930 students. 68%, more than two out of three, had problems wearing the mask. And this is the most disturbing fact. The percentage of carbon dioxide in their blood after nine minutes was double what would be allowed legally by OSHA. Nine minutes, not eight hours a day. So in conclusion, we must trust the science, but the science is not on the side of mandatory, mandatory mask-wearing for children who would be required to wear masks for eight hours a day and try to absorb their own carbon dioxide. In conclusion, I just want to say, for those people who are concerned about their kids and want them to wear masks, I respect that. I respect freedom and liberty. Wear a mask? Your kids can wear masks? That's fine. I, I support that. If you want to give them a vaccine, give them a vaccine when it's, when it's approved. Get a vaccine. These are all freedoms and liberties we cherish. But as the law says, for the rest of the community to impact on my liberty, there must be a compelling state interest in order to tell me and my kids what to do. This data does not show anything near that. And therefore, I support the board's courage and bravery in recognizing that the science is on the side of freedom and liberty. And if the children want to wear masks and you all want to wear masks, that's fine. But recognize that just wearing masks is not going to solve the problem. Vaccinating adults is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mrs. DiLuigi, I let you sit long enough. Come on up.
I totally appreciate it. I found out not only was I blind, I'm also hard of hearing, but you know...
Just state your name for the record, please.
Dawn DiLuigi, and I'm from Ivyland. I want to just say I'm so pleased to be here. It's my first time back since I retired. My name is Dawn DiLuigi, and I'm a retired Council Rock teacher who served many, many families, some of them yours, in this community for over 40 years in a variety of capacities: elementary school teacher, reading specialist, secondary education with an English degree. I retired in 2017, and boy, am I glad. But you're probably wondering, you know, I'm looking around and I'm wondering if anyone else has the experience of an actual teacher for over 40 years. You know, someone who's actually been in the classroom. And I'm thinking, yeah, I think I want to do this. I'm coming tonight. So you may ask, why am I doing it? It's certainly not for me. It's not for my family, because they're not here. And it's not for glory or any lessons that I can teach you. It's basically for the children and for all of the families that I've taught in these communities, ones that I have had the pleasure, and I loved my job, many, many years of promoting many educational attitudes that extend far beyond this room and their limited time here. I represent what I feel, and I've been door-knocking a lot, the majority of Council Rock student families and communities who would like the word "choice." That speaks volumes. Choice is the word. We all get a smile around here, don't we? Because we feel strongly as a parent, as a grandparent, as a community member, that I want to choose. I want to choose what I eat for dinner. I want to choose how my kid gets to decide what movie, if I want to, you know, parental guidance on my television. I want to decide what is best for my family. When it comes to health and COVID-19, I'll let the experts choose. And from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like there's a lot of discrepancy. Doesn't sound like everybody agrees, which is my point. Are we going to stick with the health plan that you voted on at the end of 2021 and continue with this healthy plan for 21, 22? I believe, as we all stated, we know all the health stats. They've been implemented in thousands of letters and forms, most recently telling all of you and our friends out here, the risk of serious health issues for COVID-19, not the Delta variant, is low in children. And I'm not going to go into that right now because we've all decided, we've all heard, we all have an opinion. I'm here as an experienced Council Rock teacher. I'm here for all of the teachers who are probably too scared to show up, probably don't want to risk their jobs by speaking out. I'm here for all of them. I'm here for the children who are being impacted by all of our decisions. And I want to make sure that you hear that we are just trying to do the best we can. When you teach in a classroom for over 40 years, I want to show that facial expressions, speaking clarity, non-obstruction of your face, all impact social, emotional element of learning. Friendships, many lifelong, are made in these classrooms. I know it. I lived it. Teacher-student relationships are built in these rooms. I know it. I'm living it. I'm seeing my students and their parents everywhere. Life lessons are learned through the emotional and social development by looking at someone's face. I know it's very hard to tell, and I tried to find out what was behind the masks of the people that are wearing them tonight. But I could not see the raw emotions. They were not laid bare. And honesty is the best lesson we can learn in this. When we get a full facial view and we get to hear someone, just remember what you do when you get a text. You never hear the intonation in a voice. You never see the person. And learning comes from seeing and listening and hearing and making sure that this is a positive learning environment. So I believe that we need to make Council Rock, as I used to say, "none better," because there is none that is better than Council Rock. You are on the cutting edge, and I want to thank all of the board members. When I came here tonight, I was kind of thinking, yeah, this is going to be a really hard sell, but you're already sold. You know that choice works. So what's my job tonight? My job is to be the voice for all the teachers, the administrators, the retirees like me, the employees of all the unmentioned, who want to speak out for these kids who can't or they won't, or they feel threatened. And I use the word "fearmongering" very lightly, but we all know through politics that that word is something that we all fear. Now, it's your job, your choice, to make this decision for us. Keep wearing masks a choice. Never make something a mandate. Because once you steal that choice from all of us, that becomes an impediment of our freedom. And I know Council Rock does not want to be guilty of removing that precious tool. Thank you for your attention. And may I add, my intent was for you to see my maskless face. Your emotions have had full impact on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Forty years. It's fantastic. I have Megan Brock. You signed twice. Are you speaking again? Thank you.
My name is Megan Brock. I'm from Churchville. I mean, a lot of things I've already said. I guess what I wanted to talk about was medical freedom. And I just wanted to share from my own personal experiences. I, when I graduated from college, I was a registered nurse. I worked down at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia as a pediatric ICU nurse. And I was an ICU nurse for almost eight years. So I've seen and been at the bedside of children who have died. I have personally taken care of children who have died of the flu. I've taken care of children who have died of abuse. I've taken care of children who died of overdoses. I don't want to say, I think sometimes when we bring up statistics of the reality of how many deaths are occurring in COVID in kids, sometimes people think it sounds heartless. Trust me when I say, I thankfully do not know that person, that pain, but I've walked through people who are watching their children die, and I understand it's devastating. It's absolutely devastating. So nobody wants any child to die, right? None of us. We all agree on that. We all want children to live a safe and healthy life. However, we understand that life has risk inherently. All of us in this room will die. All of us. No mask, nothing can prevent that. We are all going to die. That is the reality of our mortality. And unfortunately, we live in a, in a world where the reality is sometimes children do die, and it's awful, but it's not always preventable. About 150 to 200 kids die a year of the flu. We accept that, not that we are happy that happens, we're devastated that happens. We understand there is, the under 18 population in America is 74.2 million children. That is, those numbers are outliers. We don't make public health decisions on outliers. Interestingly, about 80 kids a year, there was, I don't know, someone did a poll in like 2010 that found about 80 kids a year die in a bathtub. Has anyone ever come to a school board meeting and demanded, or any public arena and said, hey, 80 kids a year die in a bathtub, we need to get rid of bathtubs? No, because we understand that life has risk. We also understand that, that every choice has a reaction, something that might say, and I guess I'm just going to try to wrap it up. Medical freedom is a fundamental liberty in our society. And I think that anyone who's paying attention to what's happening in our, in our state and our country understands that we really are determining, does personal freedom matter? Particularly when we talk about vaccination and vaccinating our children. Why I care about masks, and I commend you for making masks optional, and I hope and pray you will have the courage to continue that path, because I know it's going to take courage. I know, Mr. Block, you said you don't have a crystal ball. I'm going to say that in the next month or two, there's going to be tremendous pressure on this board to go back to masking children and to taking away choice from kids. Please have courage. Because I, this is not, and what's the end game in all of this? COVID isn't going away. It's going to be seasonal. This is going to happen every single year. So we have to make a choice to have courage and to allow, to have courage and make a choice that is based on the bedrock of our society, and that is personal liberty. As a parent, no one has the right to tell me what kind of medical device, if my children need to be vaccinated. It's, it's a personal choice for every parent. If people want to mask their kids, if they want to vaccinate their kids, that's their choice. But I just hope and I pray and I thank you for the courage you've already shown in making the choice to allow parents to have the freedom of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more speaker listed, and as my good friend, Mr. Cox, pointed out to me, school board policy dictate, I'm sorry, ma'am. You raising your hand? Yes. You didn't sign the paper? Come on down. Come on. What's that? Who? Who are we talking about? Yes, well, I was just going to address that. Our school board policy says that only taxpayers, people living in the district are permitted to have public speaking. I'm not done. But Mr. Hogan, I gave the liberty to earlier in the evening, so with the recommendation of our solicitor, you were going to go last. So can I let this young lady go first? Thank you. And that, from now on, that policy will be here too as well. Good evening, ma'am. Can you state where you're from and...
Sure. Ahema, Asare, is my name. A-H-E-M-A, A-S-A-R-E for the record, and I live in Upper Holland. And I am a parent of a six-year-old that will be, that's going to be in first grade at Holland Elementary. And I also work for CHOP. And I guess what I would say to you all, well, first of all, Dr. Frazier, thank you for the communication all last year. That was amazing, you and your staff. I don't think I've ever gotten that many emails in my life from a school district, but it was wonderful. It was amazing. Some of it I didn't agree with, but I... Some of it I didn't agree with, but I was glad for the level of communication. I don't think that all school districts get that privilege. So I've been in healthcare for 30 years. Don't ask me how old I am. But working at CHOP, I think, has been one of the most eye-opening things for me, this, especially throughout this pandemic. As of yesterday, we have, we have reinstituted our 100% mask mandate, regardless of whether someone's vaccinated or not. We, also by October, all of our employees, no matter whether they're patient-facing or not, must be vaccinated to keep your kids safe, not to keep us safe, to keep your kids safe. So when you walk into CHOP by October, you will know that every single person in there has been vaccinated, whether they're cleaning your room, whether they are mop, you know, whether they're giving you a needle, every single person, from the person that meets you at the door. So you will not get, you will not contract. We're, we are trying to lower the risk of infecting your families and your children because we put our children first. 70% of our patient population cannot be vaccinated, obviously, because they're young. And I think this virus has become the great equalizer in this world. You know, we talk about countries that aren't developed and countries that are developed, right? But it's, we're on the same boat now, right? I certainly, we've been privileged to kind of live in a little bit of a bubble. You know, we're not in Louisiana, we're not in Florida. Bucks County's been a little bit, you know, not as, not as bad as other places, right? I would certainly love to keep it that way. I would say put yourself in the place of the administrators, the teachers, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, every single teacher that we entrust our children to, to take care of them all day so we can have the peace of mind to do whatever else that we do. I want to keep that. I want to keep that peace of mind, knowing that, you know, that the children are safe within that environment and the teachers are safe. I know last year you all struggled with, with recruiting teachers and recruiting bus drivers. And I've been seeing billboards on 95 people recruiting for bus drivers. People are afraid and, and due to, because they, they don't know. You know, they, they know that they're driving children who cannot be vaccinated, are not vaccinated, and they don't want to put their lives at risk. And they certainly don't want to put your children's lives at risk either, right? I say all that to say that, and I support, I mean, pretty much everything that I wanted to, wanted to say has already been said. For the kids that cannot be vaccinated, they're really just like sitting ducks. They really, honestly, I know some of them, I empathize with the children that have learning disabilities and really need that interaction, and we really have to figure out something for them. But for those that didn't mind wearing masks because it was the rule, I mean, I think we all know that elementary school children are a little, they follow the rules a little bit better. Of course, they all threw it off when they, when they didn't have to wear, and they were very excited to do that and to see their friends finally. But they kind of go with the flow, they're children. And I think we have to treat them as children. We want to protect them. We want them to be around. And that's all I have to say. I, I really hope and trust that you'll make the right decisions so that we will not have high case rates for these children in elementary and middle school who are not yet ready or even prepared to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else before I wrap it up? Forty, you're going to, I'm going to hold you to it then? Okay. All right, Ms. Walker? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi.
Welcome to Council Rock.
Thanks. I always see, watch you all on TV. My name is Jamie Walker. I'm a mother of three at Central Bucks School, School District. I wanted to tell the board last year that when Central Bucks decided not to follow our Health Department, I felt very unsafe. They decided they were not going to listen to our Health Department. I decided to find a school that did. I sent my three children to a private school that followed our Health Director, followed his advice. The school was mask optional. So I have three children. My fourth grader had 21 kids in his class. I don't even recall a case of COVID in his class. Never shut down, no one was quarantined. He played at recess with the other fourth grade class, and I think the fifth grade classes went out there too, because he complained it was too crowded on the blacktop. Nobody wore masks, and nothing, nothing happened. Nothing happened. I have a seventh, I had a seventh grader. She was in, she switched classes, she was in the secondary school. Her classes had 20-some kids in it. She went to, you know, math, you know, all the, all the classes. One day she texted me, she's like, the girl next to me went home sick. I'm like, she has COVID, like, she has COVID. She tested, I said, she got tested two days later. She had COVID. They wanted to quarantine my daughter, my healthy daughter. They wanted to send her home for no reason. She didn't get sick. I have a ninth grader there too, who did the same thing, switched classes, you know, went to math, English, science. Guess what else they got to do? They got to eat lunch. They got to eat lunch. Kids got to eat lunch. Not one Bucks County school let children eat lunch, did they? Do you want to know why you didn't? You didn't follow the Health Department. Children didn't eat lunch. I think in Central Bucks, they placed kids six feet apart, kids sat in the hallways, and they ate snacks on the floor. That's what you guys did to children. I don't know if Council Rock did that, but our ex, our ex-supervisor did that. He, he didn't weather this storm. Okay. So that was my experience last year. Through a pandemic with nobody vaccinated, nothing happened. Now, these aren't like statistics and numbers and CHOP and, this is my, like, I, I put my kids in that because I didn't want my children to wear masks. I made a choice. I made a choice. I took my kids out of Central Bucks. I drove 40 minutes, four times a day. I paid a lot of money for my children to be normal. They saw each other's faces, they ate lunch, they did normal school things. Now, what's going to happen, I'm thinking, is probably the state will go back to mandating masks. Let me, that's like kind of an obvious. I wanted to discuss the disease, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I wanted to discuss the Disease Prevention and Control Law of 1955.
Ma'am, you've got about two seconds.
Okay. A Health Department can only mitigate something for two weeks. The board, the, the local Health Department, that's it. So when the state wants to put masks backs, back on, it doesn't apply to Bucks County. I hate to tell everybody that. Unless our Health Department mandates masks for a school year, that's what is going to make children wear masks again. I'm putting my kids back in Central Bucks. Masks, if the state puts a mask mandate in, it doesn't matter. It, it doesn't matter. I, I don't, I think that's what everyone has missed here. The local Health Department overrides the state. So you will be setting yourself up for lawsuits because you guys cannot put masks on children. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Forty-five seconds.
Again, Alex Enton from Churchville. Superintendent Fraser stated that he does not support critical race theory, and I really applaud you for it. But he supports diversity, equity, and inclusion. Well, then you're not being truthful with the community. In the New York Post article titled "What Critical Race Theory is Really About," it states, quote, "Its supporters deploy a series of euphemisms to describe critical race theory including equity, social justice, diversity, and inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching." So diversity, equity, and inclusion is critical race theory. The term "equity" is not "equality." Don't try to interchange these words. Everyone here stands for equality. None of us stand for equity.
Okay, that'll, that'll finalize the second half of public comment. Any new business from the board? Got something, Mr. Dog?
I just wanted to add, you know, to the educational, Education Committee agenda on August 26th, if we could just review what we passed tonight, because it was kind of a flash vote to have something on record, but I'd like to make sure that that's reviewed again if we're talking about the contingency plans that we're submitting to the state. I would like to make sure that the people have an opportunity to see what we just voted on, and then for us to, you know, take a stab at it.
Very good. Dr. Elliott Dooley noted. Thank you, ma'am. Any old business from the board? All right, hearing none. Meeting's over. Thank you.
I didn't see anything here. No, that wasn't the word I wanted to use.